Thank you. Welcome to Marquette City Commission Agenda Meeting, Monday, June 24, 2013. Meeting called to order at 7:00 PM. Will you please stand and join us in the pledge allegiance to the flag?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, everyone. City Clerk, could we have roll call, please?
Yes, Your Honor. Commissioner Kim Benzey?
Here.
Commissioner Coyne?
Here.
Commissioner Ryan?
Here.
Commissioner Snyder?
Here.
Commissioner Stonehouse?
Here.
Mayor Protem Neme?
Here.
And Mayor DePietro?
Here. Show all seven Commissioners present, City Clerk. Note of agenda changes, Commissioners. Commissioner Stonehouse?
I'd like to add an item on electronic messaging signs.
Is there a second? Is there a second?
I'll second the motion, Your Honor.
Commissioner Neme, is there a second? There's a motion by Commissioner Stonehouse, second by...
You don't need to vote.
Okay. Anyways, we'll make that number 14, moratorium on the electronic messaging sign. Is that correct, Commissioner Stonehouse?
That's correct.
Moratorium?
Really, just EMS.
Okay, on EMS. Thank you. City Clerk, do you have that? Thank you. Is there anyone else on agenda changes? Seeing none, is there a motion to approve the agenda as presented? Commissioner Stonehouse?
I motion to approve the agenda as written.
Thank you. Is there a second? Commissioner Kim Benzey?
A second.
All in favor, say yes.
Yes.
opposed, motion passes, seven to zero. Thank you. Announcements at this time, I have Agent Services Advisory Committee, six openings, Arts and Culture Advisory Committee, three, Harbor Advisory Committee, one opening, Housing Commission, one opening, Local Officers Compensation Commission, three openings, Market Area Waste Water Treatment Advisory Board, one opening, Parks and Recreation Advisory Board, one opening, Planning Commission, three openings, Regional Recreation Authority Business Plan Ad Hoc Committee, one alternate opening, Sister City Advisory Committee, three openings, Sustainable Community Ad Hoc Committee, one Parks and Recreation Advisory Board Representative, two openings, Traffic and Park and Advisory Committee, three openings. With that, we'll move to public hearing, ordinance number 604, ordinance governing request to waive or discount city fees. City Clerk?
Thank you, Your Honor. Background, at the recent budget hearings, the City Commission requested City Administration develop a policy that would allow for, or not-for-profits, that did not qualify under the promotional fund and option to consider, be considered with waiving of, or discounting of city fees. Staff has reached, or staff has researched other communities' policies and developed ordinance number 604 for consideration. The proposed ordinance, number 604, requires any organization to submit an application during the same time as the promotional ordinance. Documentation requirements will include, at a minimum, notarized copies of State of Michigan and/or U.S. Internal Revenue Service correspondence specifically demonstrating organizational status, notarized financial statement that specifically lists all cash assets and fund balances, list of all board members and other executive leaders and key personnel, a specific statement signed by an applicant authorizing official explanation why the discount is being requested, in any event, a request is associated with a capital project or other partnership request, a copy of the organizational mission statement, strategic plan, and project plan. The applications will be considered by determined categories. Upon approving any proposed discount waiver, the city manager shall implement the commission direction. Fiscal effect, the city shall receive a percentage of revenue based upon the user group and commission action. Recommendation, following the public hearing, adopt ordinance number 604 to amend the Marquette City Code, Administration Division, Number Three, Public Relations, Section 2-522, Policies and Procedures, and ordinance governing request to waive or discount fees. Additionally, what was not included in the recommendation is the adoption of the attached resolution as well, and authorizing the mayor and the city clerk to sign the resolution, and authorize the mayor to sign the resolution itself.
Thank you. At this time, I'll open this agenda, number one, to public hearing. Anyone wishing to address the commission at this time on ordinance 604? Anyone wishing to address the commission at this time on ordinance 604? Please state your name, physical address.
Good evening. Mike Andery, 80, Edgewood Drive. I mentioned it last time, I wanted to applaud Carl Zugger and his staff for coming up with a process that seems very consistent. I hope it gets administered consistently through all the, all the groups that'll be under the umbrella of this, this discount policy. I know, speaking on behalf of Marquette Little League, we are, we're in the planning process of an extremely aggressive facility plan. And with that, I'm sure you guys know, most of the dollars can be matched in a lot of different ways, and we've identified a few different funders, so, in essence, if we pay $1,000 more for user fees, we're gonna have $1,000 or more, less, to get matched. So it's going to start compounding, if we're gonna pay $5,000 to use the fields, that could equate to upwards of $20,000, $25,000, $30,000 less we'll be able to get in matching funds. So I, you know, we don't have any problem with the policy as it stands from a Little League perspective. We recognize that the fields don't come for free, and the city is providing them. What the Little League wants to provide is a number of fields that, that meet safety and distance specifications for all the, all the youth groups that utilize it. Because right now, we operate on seven fields, we pay rent on seven fields, we don't have one field that meets the criteria for specifications and safety as laid out by a number of our governing bodies. So we're, we want to work and partner with the city to try to improve that. That's, that's what we're hoping for. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else wishing to address the commission ordinance 604?
You're in Malankin at Marquette Drive. Just talking on behalf of the Fourth of July fireworks, and I'm not that familiar with it, I don't know whether this ordinance would affect what the city has done for the Fourth of July organization, and traditionally it's been in kind services, and I hope, I'm hoping that that particular segment will stay in place. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else wishing to address ordinance number 604? Anyone else wishing to address ordinance 604? Seeing none, I'll close this portion of public comment, turn it over to my fellow Commissioners. Commissioner Kim Benzey?
I have a question for staff. How many permits or organizations would the City Commission see coming at them in any one given year?
Thank you, Commissioner. Actually, let me, let me ask Carl Zugger maybe to describe how many historically have come before and asked the City Commission for some kind of discount waiver. Of course, it's entirely dependent upon the applicants.
Certainly. Thank you, Commissioners. In the past, we've had requests from a lot of the athletic or youth athletic groups asking for waivers, especially when fees have gone up. This would allow these user groups to qualify under this policy. Groups such as junior hockey program, figure skating programs, Marquette Little League, Superior Land Soccer Association. I think I've went, and of the 135 results we have for nonprofits within the city, I think approximately 27 are groups that we work with, with not just the Parks and Rec, but all of our divisions and community services, and, and all of which would possibly be eligible for some type of waiver within this, this ordinance.
I guess, if I could just continue, the question and the problem I have with this is it seems very subjective, and the gentleman that got up and spoke on behalf of Marquette Little League said, "I hope it gets administrated, administered consistently." And I guess that's my concern with it, is that 27 times a year, we as a commission would be deciding and determining who would get what discount and why. And I don't think that's why we have policy. I think we would be better off to say, "Here's the actual cost of our facilities, and here's what we feel we can charge evenly to each of these groups." I think, I think it's only fair to do it in a way like that. I, I can't imagine 27 times a year, something coming at us, and we're trying to decide what category and what discount it, it should be. I just, to me, that seems more like favoritism and not objective, which policy really should be with government. Thank you.
Commissioners? Commissioner Ryan?
Yeah, I might have a different perspective. I'm not sure, you know, this says it's for not-for-profits that do not qualify under the promotional fund, and I'm not sure what the distinction is there, why some groups qualify and some do not, since we cover quite a broad range of organizations under the promotional fund. If you want to take that one first, or...
Thank you, Your Honor. This, the ordinance was crafted really listening to the Commissioners' comments during the budget session on the kind of things that they would like to see considered as, as how the city steps up to supporting different community activities. In cases of commercial for-profit enterprises, there's a lot of different incentives that are provided in the state, primarily through mega grants or brownfield grants, mishtha facade grants, those type of things. So if you're a for-profit business, and you're looking for help in executing some type of your goals here in the city, if they're development goals or, or property improvement goals or something like that, there's a wide variety of incentives available. The AG has found, and it's been supported many, many times, and we've had the discussion in chamber before, that cities cannot donate to charity. It's considered unconstitutional and illegal. And so, in order to promote things that are, would be similar in character and as valuable to the city as what traditional economic development activities are, we started taking a look at, how can you incorporate some type of city support to those activities? And so, if their events, as the promotional ordinance characterizes, that will enhance the prestige of the city, essentially, and we've used the description with the charities who, and the organizations who have events that work with us, the distinction being that there's, there's non-charitable purposes for those events, they might enhance the prestige of the city, they might be something that would be tied with very specific community good or economic outcomes that will benefit the city. We are willing to co-brand the event with that organization. So something like the Fourth of July would be a co-branded event, where the city's contribution would be provision of services, maybe crowd control, maybe waste management. If it's the UP 200, it is a prestigious event for the city, it's something that brings a lot of people to town to stay in the hotels. That would be the kind of contribution that the city would again provide, some kind of public safety management, whether it's traffic control or waste manager or things like that. And those are decisions that the commission makes every year as part of the budget process. If it's something where it's an ongoing other type of community interest, where if it's defined in a community master plan as something that's a goal of the city, or a recreation plan, or, or a recommendation from one of the city committees, or some other ascendant interest that the community has, but it's not something that the city would necessarily want to brand as a promotional event inside the city, and it's not a commercial event, there are a lot of these organizations that, that otherwise haven't had an opportunity to seek the same kind of support as these other constituents. And so, if you go out and you take a look at fee waiver, we can't by law build into our budgets a structural deficiency. Our balance, our budgets have to balance. So whatever the cost of providing these services is, the fees have to step up and match that. And a part of the frustration we heard from the commission during budget discussion was that the fees are too high for these organizations to support. So we went back and looked at what other municipalities, what other jurisdictions do to accommodate that, and what we found was that they use very similar logic to ours. If it was something that the city might have been willing to spend money on, or provide services to anyway, if it accomplished a goal of the city, a discount is the same as making an investment in that organization for the amount that they're asking for. So if they're asking for a $1,000 fee discount for something, it would equate to $1,000 worth of some type of services or other expenditure the city would have to make to help that organization be successful. The other things that we heard during the discussion were that managing this was problematic, very similar to what the promotional ordinance development saw. As Commissioner Kim Benzey noted, these things come in typically throughout the year. The commission expressed frustration with that because there's no way to do an apples-to-apples comparison. And so, we sought to put it in the same timeframe for managing the process as what we had established for the promotional ordinance. There were many comments by the commission as to why we would ever offer a discount. If we don't know what the carrying capacity of individual organizations might be to pay, this might create some kind of a rush for every organization that might seek to qualify, to ask for one without any consideration by the commission to their ability to pay for it anyway, which is why we included the language on certifying their status and providing some financial statements. We heard discussion from the commission that said there should be some differentiation based on whether or not the groups are actually otherwise paying taxes here in the city, or if they're located outside the jurisdiction. So some of that is built into the, the discount structure that's proposed. And then finally, we put in a proviso in the ordinance that said, "On top of all of these other considerations, this is ultimately up to the commission to decide." And so, if there are other extenuating circumstances, because groups like the, the Little League want to do some facilities development, or there are longstanding loans that have been made to other organizations, like the Youth Soccer Association for developing the Kaufman Complex, those are all things that ultimately could be brought to bear, that could receive consideration from the commission for any type of fee discount. So we tried to put together an ordinance that's based on best practices, as we found them in other communities, and that addresses the four or five different specific things that the commission noted during the budget sessions.
Well, I'll get specific on a couple of things. First of all, on the categories. Category three, citizens, private groups, and other private organizations residing or with a principal place of business or members who live outside the city jurisdictional boundary. How is that interpreted, or members? Does that mean if an organization has 100 members and one lives outside the city, that they would be a outside-the-city organization, a category three?
That would be subject to interpretation. If you had...
Who's interpretation?
Well, the commissions, we'd look for your guidance. But if you had, for example, somebody who registered an organization in the city of Marquette, but all of its members were located in Detroit, that wouldn't necessarily qualify, qualify for them for an in-city discount.
I understand that, but I'm more concerned about, you know, if we have Little League teams and we have some kids from outside the city, are we gonna, are we gonna punish them for that?
That would be the kind of guidance that we'd be looking for from the commission. If you would like us to make recommendations based on 50% of an organization's membership being located in the city, or 25%, or 75%, that's, that specific criteria is what we would implement within the administrative policy.
Says the city manager shall make that decision as, as far as this policy is.
And I would make it as informed by my leadership.
It also says the commission may at its discretion vary the percentage discount for an applicant based on these factors by no more than 15%. Why would we tie the hands of a future commission as, as far as what decision they might want to make?
We don't see it as tying the hands of the future commission because this ordinance could be amended at any time by the commission, presumably superseded.
Taken literally by no more than 15%, you know, 15% of 30% is about 5%, so we're not...
It would be an additional 15% of the total amount requested.
It doesn't say that.
What it would ultimately result in is an organization that qualified for the greatest discount could get a 45% fee discount.
I would prefer there would be no Statement A, however you want to describe it. I think, you know, the commission could make a decision based on their own judgment, but those are my concerns.
Thank you. Commissioner Stonehouse?
Well, I can certainly support the ordinance. I think it makes an awful lot of sense. I think it's an effort to bring some organization to something that has been very disorganized in the past. And ultimately, while it provides a framework for different organizations and what discounts they may have achieved and how they may qualify, it also ultimately puts all the decision-making authority right in this commission. So by doing this, we still reserve the right to do what we wish to do, but we have provided a framework for the groups that may bring a, the particular recommendation forward. And I think that's a huge step forward from what we presently have. If we choose to change it in the future, we certainly have every opportunity to do so. And this is certainly not an end-all document, it's not gonna be cut into concrete and sit here for the next 50 years. We'll have an opportunity to change it, modify it, sculpt it, as we have an opportunity to work with it. So rather than try and find things wrong with it, which we all can picky-unishly do, I would rather look at things that are positive with it, that allow us to go forward.
I object to picky-unishly.
Commissioner...
What's not?
Commissioner Ryan? Commissioner Coyne has the floor.
Your Honor, I would like to make a motion to adopt ordinance 604.
Is there a second?
Support.
Recommendation, following the public hea... Any other Commissioner, any Commissioner Ryan?
I would just like to respond, I didn't consider my, my objections picky-unish. And I, and I would further say, why not get it right the first time? I mean, if it's not right, why not do it right? And, and I think to, to say that, in an ordinance, that the commission can only waive so, a certain level of expenses, I, I think that's a judgment the commission can make. And to have to rewrite the ordinance to do that doesn't make sense to me. I'll support it because half a loaf is better than none, but that's the most I can say.
Thank you. Commissioner Coyne?
Well, I would like to just raise a point that we had the discussion without any motion, and no motion was made to suspend the rules. If I'm correct, that should be the way it is. And I also will follow Commissioner Stonehouse's comment that this is, was an attempt to put objectivity in establishing the fees, because for at least 30 years, it's just been every time it comes up, then we have this big argument, and there's no real way of being in any way remotely consistent or objective. So admittedly, this has, I think the two Commissioners raised valid points, but if this passes, then they can also, down the road, make a motion to adopt the changes that they wanted. But I think this is a real valid attempt in a response to what we had talked about to try to provide some objectivity in the setting of the fees. It's not perfect, but it's a step in the right direction.
Thank you. Commissioner Kim Benzey?
Can I just ask staff again to clarify, we can't, and I'm probably not gonna re-quote this right, but we can't give away space, is that...
Thank you. It's my understanding, and I'm looking at the city attorney maybe to back me up on this, but governments can't engage in charity, is the guidance from the AG. We can't give away material, equipment, we can't make donations in terms of money or time or resources to charities because it's considered to be unconstitutional. And so, charity as, as we operate in Michigan is illegal for governments, but I'll ask the attorney, the city attorney to clarify.
I think that's generally correct. Typically, we try to differentiate unrealized revenue from spending taxpayer dollars. I see a distinction there, but, you know, yeah, the general rule is we don't donate city funds to, without a city purpose, whether it's Little League or Girl Scouts, or what it might be.
I guess, I, I just want to leave this with clarity, and that is that if we set the fee of the soccer field at $5 a game, and, and that certainly isn't the cost of a soccer field, would we be giving, giving away?
Let me take, let me answer from how we developed the policy, and I guess if Ron needs to clarify, he can too. The way we wrote it was specifically to demonstrate that there was public value in, in offering the discount. And so, for example, you heard from Little League that they have a strategic plan, that they would like to make improvements in the field. And if you look in the city's master plan, you'll see that maintaining healthy lifestyle in the city is something that's very clearly enunciated. If you take a look at the charter, it says that we need to provide for recreational opportunities. It doesn't specify which, thankfully, because those tastes might change in the community over time. We demonstrated through the park and rec planning process that investments in youth sports not only benefit the individual participants but the community because they contribute to better overall adolescent public safety and opportunities for school programs and other partners to integrate with us. And so, it's not hard to imagine that, based on any one of those documents, we could be sitting at a commission meeting or at a budget session, and I might be proposing that we make an investment in that kind of facility, where we, we might need, as a result of interest in, in Little League baseball, to provide for some kind of a facility that would support that. And if somebody else is willing to take that on, then that would be something that, as our partner, if they're sharing the vestment and, and we're sharing the investment, we can make a very easy case that it's a public-private partnership that's implementing something established by city planning as being something that's in the community good. But if it were something, to give you a kind of a contrary example, if it were somebody who was offering a summer camp and they wanted to give out T-shirts to, to the individual participants, really the only people who are getting the public, or the good from that would be the people who are actually getting the T-shirts. And so, giving out T-shirts would be considered charity, or giving out individual lunches would be considered a charitable purpose. So there's, there's lots of different examples. We referred to State of Michigan, the Attorney General's website, he's got pretty extensive case files on it. And I think, at least in our, our deliberation, we've found something that if we were ever challenged, we could demonstrate that any fee breaks that the city might choose to make would be in lieu of potentially other investments that the city might make in according with their standing planning process.
Commissioner Kim Benzey, you still have the floor. Commissioner Neme?
Thank you, Your Honor. I'll support this ordinance. I think it provides us a framework to make these decisions. I think the, the reason they put the limit on us is because we're, basically, we're spendthrifts. And a group comes in and asks for, for something, and we'll give them the, the moon, and, and I think the, the limit is, is nice, but I think Commissioner Ryan makes a good point, 15% is only three, four and a half percent of 30%, four and a half points of 30%, so perhaps you want to just say 15% point, 15 percentage points. So perhaps you want to just say 15% point, 15 percentage points, or something like that.
Thank you, Commissioner. Our intention was to provide an additional 15% on top of the 30%, so the reading of it should be, and we'll go back and make sure we correct that.
Yeah, just clarify that, because otherwise, 15% would be, we could raise it up to 34.5% on a 30% one. And I think having a parameter is good. In the future, if there's some problems, we have the ability to amend ordinances without, you know, certainly not as difficult as charter amendments, so it can be done by the commission.
Thank you. And you want, Commissioner Kevanzy?
Just one final comment. I'm just wondering if it would be in our best interest to make sure we revisit this next year just to see how it went, or what we need to change? And I don't know if any, if either the motion maker or the second would be willing to kind of put that as part of it, just so we can see what worked and what didn't.
Thank you. Commissioner Coyne?
I'd be very happy to include that in the motion. Thank you.
Commissioner Snyder?
I'm very happy to amend that as well. It makes sense.
Is that the consensus of the commission to include that language? Is there anyone who doesn't want it in?
I believe that's the consensus. Any other commissioner on agenda number one? Seeing none, there's a motion by Commissioner Coyne, second by Commissioner Snyder. Recommendation following public hearing, adopt ordinance number 604 to amend the Marquette City Code Administration, Division III, Public Relations, Section 2-522, Policies and Procedures. Orenance governing request to waive or discount city fees. City Clerk, can we do a roll call on that?
Your Honor, just one point of clarification. The motion also, or the recommendation also included the adopting the attached resolution with appropriate signatures.
Do you have that, City Clerk?
Yes, Your Honor.
Okay. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Kevanzy?
Yes.
Commissioner Coyne?
Yes.
Commissioner Ryan?
Yes.
Commissioner Snyder?
Yes.
Commissioner Stonehouse?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Neme?
Yes.
And Mayor DePietro.
Yes. Motion passes seven to zero. Thank you. With that, we'll move to number two, presentation. Board of Canvassers report by City Clerk Dave Blue.
This is going to turn out to be the final report for this board, as just recently the state of Michigan adopted legislation that will abolish local canvassing boards. However, going through this presentation, we have still in effect Dave Allen as members, excuse me, as members of this group, Dave Allen, myself, Inez Christian, Lauren Marlowe, Margaret Chorki, and our liaison is Chris Hazaras, Deputy Clerk. These folks have all served this group very, very well, and serve the commission and the people of the city of Marquette. We were originally organized under our city charter and state law election code. This group represents the city residents and conducted or reviewed the elections of all city elections, whether they be combined with state or federal elections. Sometimes, occasionally, we would certify just a city election when there was only a city ballot out there to be considered, and the Marquette County Board of Canvassers would not meet, and it would be only the certification of our own body here. However, that's the body that will certify all Marquette city elections from this point forward, will be the Marquette County Board of Canvassers, and they will certify everything. We would have met in August, following the August primary on the 6th, and in November on the 6th, following November 5th, general election. Again, the act that abolishes the local canvassing boards is Act 51 of 2013, and it was effective June 1, 2013.
Commissioners, any questions for our City Clerk? Commissioner Snyder?
Well, one, I want to thank the board for all the work that you guys have put in on dealing with the elections and everything that's come in. But I'm also hoping you can give a little bit of a public explanation of who's going to be running our elections now.
Oh, this is only the canvassing of the elections. The election board will still maintain its impact as far as setting the structure for elections and appointing election inspectors and monitoring the actual elections within a city. Nothing with that changes. It's only monitoring the election results.
Okay, so who will take over that role?
The County Board of Canvassers.
Okay.
They'll do it for every jurisdiction. So there was a lot of duplication in this, so I guess it won't be a major change from the standpoint that that structure is already in place.
All right, thank you.
Any Commissioner Stonehouse?
I just, too, wanted to thank the board for their good work over the years.
Any other commissioner? Seeing none? Thank you very much, City Clerk Dave Blue, and very good presentation. Thank you. With that, we'll move to number three, presentation. Upper Peninsula Children's Museum Explainer of the Quarter, Marlee Sherbina and Jim Edwards.
Come on over here. Please, Ken, and I'll take some pictures. Come on, come on. So, and always, the Marquette City Commissioners over here. They want to present the Certificate of Achievement to Marlee Sherbina. Outstanding UP Children's Museum Explainer of the Quarter.
Let's start over. Come here. You're too far back. Come here, Jim. My fellow commissioners over here. And always, they want to present the Certificate of Achievement presented to Marlee Sherbina. Outstanding UP Children's Museum Explainer of the Quarter, June 24, 2013. So anyways, mothers, come here for a minute. You didn't get the picture of the certificate. Hold that. Well, you're taking some pictures. Jim Edwards got some other stuff he wanted to talk about. Jim, you have the floor. Come here.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Marlee joined us in the new year, and she's a live wire. And back in Wales, she'd be known as Marlee the Party. She loves to, not because she's a party girl, she loves to run the birthday parties at the museum, and I think she's really after my job. But most recently, she's been an ambassador for the museum on the latest chapter in the way the museum was designed, called Designosaurus. So our latest chapter was, thank you, Kerry, Maritimosaurus. And I think by next week, you'll see a new photograph of Marlee on the museum webpage, where she's now First Mate Marlee, all dressed up at the helm and helping the Maritime Museum with their new exhibit work. So she's made a really great start in lots of different ways, and she really deserves this.
Thank you. Come here. Your mother wants you to say some stuff here. Come on. Come here, Jim.
Oh, you've written a speech?
Yes, come on. She wants to, we'll give you seven minutes, and then we got to move on. Is there anything you want to say to Nina from the Children's Museum, or Jim Edwards, or...
Thank you.
All right. Let's give her a round of applause. Thank you, Mark. Thank you very much. Okay, with that, we'll move to number four. Boards and committees' recognition of all coin members. Stan Bigum, Jamie Michaels, Gene Parant, Paul Giddon. This goes to Stan Bigum. Certificate of appreciation for volunteer effort on the senior service task force. Thank you for your hard work and dedication for serving the citizens of this community. This is from my fellow commissioners and I, and city staff. Did you want your picture taken with?
Sure.
Stan also gets the shirt with a city pin.
Thank you.
And we thank you very much, Stan, for all of your work.
My pleasure.
And... Stay right here, though, Stan. Don't be going too far. And this one goes to Jamie Michaels. Jamie gets a pink shirt with the city pin that's attached to it.
Thank you very much.
And this certificate of appreciation to Jamie Michaels for volunteer effort on the senior service. Come here, in here. Jeez. Effort on the senior service task force. Thank you for your hard work and dedication in serving the citizens of this community. And this also from my fellow commissioners and myself for all your great work and many, many hours.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. And Gene Parant. Certificate of appreciation presented for volunteer effort on the senior service task force. You get the pink shirt. Any of you who don't like those colors, you can come back to City Hall, and exchange them or change, exchange among yourselves. For volunteer effort on the senior service task force, thank you for your hard work and dedication in serving the citizens of this community. And this is also from my fellow commissioners and myself. Thank you for volunteering for all you do.
Thanks, Ken.
Thank you. And Paul Giddon, Giddon?
Giddon.
Giddon, okay. Certificate of appreciation for volunteer effort on the senior service task force. Thank you for your hard work and dedication in serving citizens of this community. And this is also from my fellow commissioners and from myself. Thank you very much. And you get a city shirt with a city pin. No. Come here, Stan. You aren't, go ahead, no.
I just want to thank the commissioners for giving us the opportunity to serve, and I know there was a few others that couldn't make it, Earl Hahn, and Ciara Hall, and Laura Morowski, and we have to thank Jamie Palmer from the city. I think we all put in a real good effort, and my friend over there, Carl, we all had a lot to do with this, and we do appreciate the giving us your ear.
And we thank you very much, but don't leave yet. Come on in, move in a little bit, get a little picture taken. So anyways, that was my next line, was I was going to recognize three people that couldn't make this meeting tonight, Earl Hahn, Ciara Hall, and Laura Morowski. They'll get their certificates, and we thank them also for all the hard work that they had did on this task force. So could we have a round of applause, please? Thank you. Paul? Thank you. Yeah. Thank you, everybody. Get your pictures taken, then go back to your seats. At this time, we will move to public comment. Comments should not exceed three minutes per person. Citizens may reserve time to speak on agenda items. This may result in an item being moved up on agenda at the mayor's discretion. Is there anyone wishing to address the city commission? Please state your name and physical address, please.
Thank you. James Gallant, 538 Yomar Road, Scandia, Michigan. And it looks like we have a common thread now, that my county commission is now certifying your elections for you to be and be here. So we kind of, the people, you know, the one thing about a group of 101 lives out of the city, so therefore you discriminate against them. This is a county, remember? This is a living community. This is our whole county, and we all need to work together. Okay? Please. But what I came here for was I'd ask you to, I'd like time on item number nine, YMCA lease, please. And also, I'd ask you to please consider entertaining a point of order concerning the rules surrounding a point of order. It'd be page 247, line one. So I'm noticing our, over time, that our members of the commission and the community here is being denied their rights to have the real parliamentary rule read onto the record by the parliamentarian, and to have the clerk archive the published verbatim rules in the minutes. They're archived. And what you'll do over time, you'll end up with a little book like this. This is 1915 version of Robert's Rules, little thing. It'd be just the rules that you used, about six or eight or 10 of them that you always use. If you had that, had it on the record, everybody would know. You'd have a little book like this. And suspend the rules. He's going to suspend the rules. But when you suspend a rule to make a motion, that means eventually you do have to make a main motion. You didn't do that. You motioned to refer. You motioned to suspend a rule, and then you motioned to refer. That's not a main motion. That was, I don't know what lease that was on. But also, the motion to refer, like I said, you did, you made a motion, that's a secondary motion. That's out of order. So that would be page 168, line one. And also, the motion to amend. I mean, this guy, he was just like saying he wanted something, but a motion to amend? You can't amend at this meeting? I mean, he didn't understand that you can amend at any other meeting. It's like an expectation has been given to this commission, and they just go by it, as if that's the way it's supposed to be done. So please, please do that, because this is getting a little out of hand, and you guys, I mean, you're there, that you want to kind of know, and I know that Commissioner Kevanzy said that. She said she was concerned about that part, about archiving and the precedence of the rules of order. You'll have that right in front of you, and you won't have to worry about it. And if you could please start doing that, I appreciate that. Thanks.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else wishing to address the commission at this time?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Commissioners. My name is Bob Kulischak, 617 Hampton. First of all, as an avid walker, and as someone who is a member of the Marquette County Department of Health Board, I'd like to commend the city on making the city a more walkable community. It's with that topic that I want to bring a concern to your attention this evening. In my walking over the past several years, I've noticed frequently that it's very difficult to cross the intersection of US 41 and McClellan. That's by Public Service Garage and Jeffries over on the other side there. There's not signage with a walk sign there. I was thinking something comparable to the crossing in McClellan on Washington Street by Family Video and that general area. This is a very dangerous intersection for walkers, and if anyone were in a wheelchair and coming up to the curb cuts there, which enable them to get across, they would have great difficulty getting across because there are cars that are turning right and don't have to stop, and there are cars going many different ways, and it's a very dangerous intersection. I understand that the state has responsibility for signage at that intersection, but I think it would be appropriate for the city to take action to try and convince the state to put the appropriate signage in there. I think this can be done. Many, many years ago, when I was on the city commission, we had a similar situation at Grove Street, and through persistent and rather forceful efforts on the part of the city, they were able to get a stop sign in there. It's oftentimes sad if you have to wait for an accident to happen before you take action to remedy a problem. And this is an area where there are a lot of tourists who are staying in the hotels and don't know the area, and may try to get across there. There are a lot of people who are walking and just have it very difficult to get across. So I would ask that you take this under consideration, and if you choose to go forward with it, I'm sure you'll realize that unless things have changed in all these decades since I was on the commission, it takes a while to get the state's attention, and you do have to be persistent about it. So if you could deal with that issue, I think we would all be safer. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else wishing to address the commission at this... Anyone else wishing to address the commission at this time?
My name is Don Grisham. I live at 903 Wilson Street. I'd like to reserve time to address item number seven regarding the YMCA.
Cheryl Wadby. I reside at 465 Blem Huber in Marquette. I reserve the right to speak on item seven.
Oh, you say your last name, Cheryl? Thank you.
Good evening. I'm Jenna Zidunek. I live at 1707 West Avenue, Marquette. And I'd also like to reserve the right to speak on item number seven. Z-D-U-N-E-K. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello. My name's Paul Giddon. I live at 911 Pine Street. And I'd like to also reserve the right to speak on item seven.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name's Anne Sherman. I live at 338 East Prospect Street in Marquette. And I too would like to reserve time for discussion on item seven.
Okay, thank you.
I am Karen Carroll, 1860 Altamont. I too would like to reserve time to speak on item seven regarding the YMCA.
Thank you.
I'm Matt Deal, 438 West Michigan Street. And I'd like to reserve time for item number seven on your agenda.
Matt.
Deal, D-E-A-L.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. I am Gordon C. Peterson of Two Elder Drive. Oppose privatization and union busting and support collective bargaining and unions. We, the Peoples' Marquette City Commission, voted five to one to privatize one full-time position for custodial services at City Hall. The position was held by a union worker. Should we, the Peoples' Government, privatize services and bust unions? Do all workers have the right to join a union to collectively bargain to attain worker rights to effective and efficient job performance, healthy and safe working conditions, health care benefits, and family sustaining incomes to provide clothing, food, housing, recreation, and transportation? Or do private employers have the right to receive the highest possible personal profits and to give the lowest possible wages to workers? To answer these questions, we, the Peoples', state, justify, and apply our basic right. What is our basic right? Our basic right is stated in our Constitution, laws, and regulations, including those related to our revolution, New Deal, civil rights movements, feminist rights movements, environmental rights movements, and gay rights movements. Our most concise declaration of our basic right was passed by our Congress, signed by our president, and accepted by our Supreme Court. Our pledge of allegiance declares justice for all. These statements reveal our great progression from a minimalist federal government promoting justice for the few wealthy white males to an activist government promoting justice for all. Based on our basic right of justice for all, we, the Peoples' Marquette City Commission, should reverse its decision, oppose privatization and union busting, and support collective bargaining and unions, thereby promoting our basic right of justice for all. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else wishing to address the commission at this time?
Good evening. My name's Ruth Almen, A-L-M-E-N. And I'd also like to reserve time to speak on item seven. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. I'm Jeanette Over and I live at 350 East Ridge Street in Marquette. And I just have a couple of comments to make about the why. That I would like you to consider extending the $1 annual lease for the Marquette YMCA property. And I just have a couple of benefits that I think would be, that would come from that. Is the expansion of the Y would be using a federal revenue grant. And that would start sooner as far as extending the Y as long as the commission could approve that lease for the period of time that is requested. The amount of federal dollars coming into Marquette would be a boost to Marquette's economy and resources. The money used by the contractors as they're working in Marquette would be a benefit to the economy of Marquette. The extension of the Y will also lead to an increase in employed staff. Increasing Y activities in the community brings in additional revenue because people come from other places for some of those activities. And the use of the Y increases the health of Marquette citizens, including volunteers who contribute revenue and activities that add to the economic stability of Marquette. And in time, I believe that the Y and the city can develop a financial plan that deals with the needs of the parking lot and other things that may come up. I thank you for considering my request.
Thank you, ma'am.
My name is Jay Peterson. I live at 112 East Hewitt here in Marquette. And I'd also like to reserve the time to speak about item number seven on your agenda.
Okay, thank you.
Lyle Van Der Schaaf, 235 here on Woods Drive, Marquette. I'd like to reserve time to speak on agenda item number 13. And if the commission could move that up in the agenda, that would also be appreciated.
How do you spell your last name, sir? Thank you.
Good evening. I'm Lisa Combs Teroux. I reside at 1330 Woodridge Avenue. I'd like to reserve time on item number seven.
Thank you.
Hello, I'm Carrie Freeze. I'm at 6239 US 41 South. And I'm here for item number eight, the Talship Festival in Marquette. If you have any questions, I'll be available to answer those.
Thank you, Karen.
My name is Daniel Meade, 150 High Point Court. Would like to reserve time for item number 13.
Good evening. I'm Malankin in 8 Market Drive. Just a unique quick question for your number one item on the new zoning gifts and donations. Does this mean that from here on in, the shirts that you gift away to people is not allowed or the pins or memorabilia? Just a question. Because now that's a, is that a donation or is that a gift? How do you figure that out? Also, I would, and obviously there's going to be lots of people on item number seven. And rather than reserving time, I'll just briefly throw my two cents in. I know it's up for second reading. You tend not to want to throw the baby out with the bathwater. If we can use that explanation. There's so many positive things that happen with the Y. And any amount will take harder earned dollars from children that use the facility, whether it's $500 that's taken away, or $1,000, or $2,000, or $10,000, or whatever. Those dollars are taken away from individuals that benefit from the Y. We, as a society, live in a community that sometimes our taxes have to go to the good of the entire community. We, as individuals, don't get to pick and charge a fee for our foreign visitors that use our facilities, our streets, our infrastructure, our Y, our parking lots. We don't have a separate fee for those. Our general taxes kind of take care of that as a general good for everybody. And so perhaps some of this thought can be categorized in the general good for the entire community and all the related people that are involved, whether they're in our community or outside of our community. But any amount of dollars that are taken away for another activity to promote facility improvements such as the parking lots, no plowing, and any other related is taking money away from the youth of our community. And that's, I hope that the citizens or the city commission can look at not throwing the baby out with the bathwater and having the tax dollars go for the good of the entire community rather than taking away from people that can least afford it. They would be the ones that would be really denied the services. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else wishing to address the commission at this time?
Good evening, Mayor and Commissioners. My name is Victoria Waters and I am a resident. About a month ago, I received a notice from the management of the government subsidized apartment. About a month ago, I received a notice.
Did you state your address, name and address?
Oh, I'm sorry. Victoria Waters, 222 South Fifth.
Okay, thank you.
About a month ago, I received a notice from the management of the government subsidized apartment building where I live that I have too many air purifiers running in my apartment and that this is unacceptable. I was asked to check my lease agreement and was referred to a service coordinator. I was using four air purifiers and two fans in my apartment because I was having problems breathing and was coughing a lot sometimes all night. I have asthma and do my best to keep healthy. But about, but about a year ago, several heavy smokers moved into the floor where I live. Several months later, I asked management to move me to another floor with less smoke. I was refused at that time, even though I had a doctor's note stating that I have bronchitis like symptoms. Recently, I discovered that some government subsidized housing facilities have become smoke-free. And as a result, some of the smokers in those facilities who refused to quit smoking moved into our facility. I don't understand why all government subsidized housing is not smoke-free when other public buildings such as restaurants, office buildings, and even bars are now smoke-free by law. I think that all government subsidized housing should be smoke-free, especially for those for the elderly, some of whom, excuse me, are on oxygen, have heart disease, or have had heart attacks or strokes. I would like to have Michigan laws about smoking in all public buildings changed to include government subsidized housing facilities for the above mentioned reasons. If this law is passed, I would like to know whether or not out-of-state corporate owners of public housing will be required to abide by the laws that would apply to the smoke-free status of government subsidized housing right here in Marquette. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else wishing to address the commission at this time? Ma'am, you'll have to give that to the city clerk. Anyone else wishing to address the city commission at this time?
Frank Jeff Berito, 350 East Ridge, Marquette, to speak on items six, seven, and 13. These are my opinions. We've all noticed the increase of graffiti throughout Marquette, a possible byproduct of the unwanted glitz and attention that you're drawing our way. This board is previously accused of encouraging graffiti because you leave it there, in effect advertising the vandal's cause. I advise you then to prudently paint over their unsightly gibberish. Obliterating it right away is the greatest deterrent to graffiti. They won't find the risk worthwhile if their message isn't promptly erased. Any impulse on their part to rewrite the messages increases their likelihood of capture. We do not appreciate their artwork. I happily volunteer time to patrol, once leading to the arrest of a graffiti artist. Additional night volunteers are needed. Many of us want you to nip this epidemic in the bud. History has proven too many times that when you do nothing, matters only worsen. The graffiti is another example of how you're not proactive, similarly to picnic rocks, the blocked roundabout, and last year's fireworks fiasco, after which you exerted zero efforts to prevent reoccurrences. Regarding the contract, the manager took the initiative for you. He reverted it to allow the city to intervene if necessary. Why wasn't it worded properly to begin with? Major considerations were omitted. Mr. Ryan wasn't sure if a mistake was made not to delay the fireworks one night. Perhaps he's unaware that the forecast was favorable, contrary to the prevailing condition, a 1,000% certainty of rain. Knowing how upset the vendors were might help him realize the mistake after they'd lugged tons of hardware to the lower harbor. On July 4th, they'd made most of their day's money by the time the event got washed out. Imagine the large turnout the next night had anyone had the sense to delay the fireworks. Instead, by the next night, the big shebang was over, so few people showed up to patronize the event on a lovely evening as forecasted. John Keevila passed all responsibility onto the 4th of July Committee. I insist that the city was accountable and ought to have interceded. The manager's introduction of the needed language into this year's contract proves Keevila wrong and it answers Mr. Ryan's uncertainty as well. The 4th of July Committee exists on behalf of this board. When you pass your jobs off on other entities, you're responsible for the havoc they wreak. In this case, the loss of enjoyment for 3,000 people. And who knows, maybe $10,000 to charities that can never be recovered because you enabled someone who's major league unqualified to administer a major event. As a result, three quarters of that stellar $30,000 show went up in smoke, enjoyed by a soaking wet one quarter of the usual crowd. With marginal weather affecting so many July 4ths, we need competent people in charge who have their heads together. So much is at stake as existed in 2012, and there was such an obvious, easy solution.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else wishing to address the commission at this time? Anyone else wishing to address the commission at this time? Anyone else wishing to address the commission at this time? Seeing none, I'll close this portion of the public comment. Move to number five, consent agenda. Commissioner Stonehouse?
A motion to accept the consent agenda.
Is there a second?
It's a motion to approve the consent agenda.
That is a motion to approve the consent agenda, yes, sir.
Thank you.
Commissioner Stonehouse, anything further? Commissioner Naimi, anything further?
Nothing, Your Honor.
Any other commissioner? Seeing none, there's a motion by Commissioner Stonehouse, seconded by Commissioner Naimi, to approve the consent agenda as presented. All in favor? Say yes.
Yes.
Motion passes seven to zero. Thank you. With that, we'll move to number six. Attorney correspondence with the Michigan Department of Fire and Manatee. City clerk?
Yes, Your Honor, thank you. Background, on May 13th, 2013, the city commission approved an extension of $3,000 for the services of Stewart and Sheridan PLC for completing work on correspondence with the MDEQ and to work on truck route ordinance. Attorney Brian Sheridan has completed the proposed correspondence and has coordinated his final effort with staff. The correspondence is ready to forward to the MDEQ if approved by the city commission. Fiscal effect none by this action. Recommendation, approve transmitting the correspondence to the MDEQ. Alternatives as determined by the commission.
Thank you, city clerk. City manager?
Thank you, Your Honor. I only wanted to point out that Attorney Sheridan is here with us this evening and he stands prepared to answer any questions directly from the city commission.
Thank you, Commissioners. Thank you, sir.
I know it gets kind of complicated. I'd do the same thing myself. Your supplement discloses the estimated astronomical costs that we're expected to endure for the joy of watching those filthy mining rigs take over the northwest corner of town. The supplement, item number three, indicates $3,099,000 to resurface Wright Street, $743,000 for Sugarloaf, and $675,000 in association with County Road 550. Of course, roads need maintenance anyway, but how high a percentage is attributable to the perceived abuses by logging and mining rigs? Adding to the public injury, you authorize the alleged waste of $3,000 tax dollars to farm out legal services. Our salaried attorney was fully qualified to counsel this item. There's no conflict of interest because all parties share a common There's no conflict of interest because all parties share a common objective to provide for safe and efficient traffic flow through town. You've had years doing itemized the ramifications which face us tonight. The company stated in the mining application its intention to use existing transportation routes, very likely the 550 road. Why then would anyone on this board so foolishly endorse that awful mine? Most of you and the other municipalities threw your hopes in the County Road 595. All you entities are accused of buying into a lie, the too-familiar step-by-step hurdle-by-hurdle approach to finagle something through. Now we're expected to pay out millions to facilitate a mine that the majority of Marquette residents wanted no part of. To add to the enigma, the company that's created such tumult for us sold out before the first ton of ore was ever extracted. So long as this board bought into the mine and into County Road 595, you're asked to have the mining company pay for the road improvements, commensurate with the estimated damage that their trucks will cause, not to mention the impact of their exhaust, noise, and dust. The expenses before you constitute a major insult to injury that makes the 3,000 wasted dollars for legal expenses look miniscule.
Thank you, sir. Commissioner Stonehouse?
I motion to approve transmitting the correspondence to the Michigan Department of Environmental Quality.
Thank you. Is there a second? Commissioner Schneider?
Support.
Thank you. Commissioner Stonehouse?
Well, I read it as essentially requiring the Department of Environmental Quality to fully consider the Michigan, rather, city of Marquette within the environmental impact statement. That was never done originally. It looks to be that they only included, only considered, and only spoke with the county and the state and not the city of Marquette. And given the route for the trucks going through the middle of the city, it would seem pertinent that the city of Marquette is included within that environmental impact statement. And by reading the letter from Mr. Sheridan, it lays out the requirement and requests them to consider the city and to revise the mining permit as necessary based on the environmental impact statement. I might add that the value that would come out of a revised impact statement potentially would be exactly that, to tell us ways that we might be able to capably mitigate the danger of the trucks going through the city. So I don't see it as some kind of a last-ditch effort to stop the trucks. It's really trying to figure out what do we do scientifically to deal with what is going to be a very essential problem. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Stonehouse. Commissioner Snyder?
Sure. You know, really following on Commissioner Stonehouse's comments, I concur wholeheartedly. But I do object to being told that by approving the transmittal of this correspondence that I'm in support of the mine. You know, we as a city, this is something that we have to deal with regardless of what we as commissioners feel about the mine one way or the other. And so I definitely want to encourage our municipality to engage in dialogue with all entities involved.
Thank you. Any other commissioner at this time? Commissioner Ryan?
I'm not going to campaign on this, but I just want to make it clear that I'm not going to support this because I don't believe it's in the best long-term interest of the city of Marquette. I believe the issues we're dealing with can be resolved through a cooperative effort with a number of entities, government entities, and I don't believe this action promotes that kind of cooperation. I think this action can jeopardize our relationship with some of our neighbors, with Market County, with the Market County Road Commission, the DEQ, State of Michigan, and our elected representatives. There's already a cooperative effort underway involving all of those entities that is gaining some traction. I believe that rather than helping that effort, this action will have the opposite effect. I believe it can also affect other initiatives with the state of Michigan. My opinion, at best, it's ineffective; at worst, it could be counterproductive.
Thank you. Any other commissioner wishing to address agenda number six? Seeing none, there's a motion by Commissioner Stonehouse, seconded by Commissioner Snyder, to accept a recommendation of agenda number six and approve transmitting the correspondence to the Michigan Department of Environmental Quality. All in favor, say yes.
Yes.
Oppose?
No.
Motion passes six to one with Commissioner Ryan voting no. Thank you. With that, I'd like to, city clerk? I'm going to move number 13 up because I believe that number seven's going to be kind of lengthy, so at this time, I'll move to number 13. NTN requests to construct Trailhead structure on Hartwood Forest property. City clerk?
Thank you, Your Honor. Background, the NTN requested to purchase a portion of the Hartwood property from the city of Marquette in the spring of 2012. Subsequent negotiation for the sale of the property did conclude in agreement. The city commission expressed support for the project, and the NTN subsequently submitted a restructured request to use a portion of the property for construction and possible donation of a structure to the city. The NTN plan was reviewed by the Parks and Recreation Advisory Board at their meeting of April 15, 2013. The board considered that the request was supported by the Parks and Recreation Master Plan and passed the following motion. Lynn Loxo moved that the plan presented be approved with the notation that this involves no cost to the city. John Krikowski seconded the motion. It was passed unanimously. The NTN plan was reviewed by the Planning Commission at their meeting of May 7, 2013. The Planning Commission held considerable discussion and unanimously passed the following motion. It was moved by CLIP, seconded by Schaefer, and carried six to zero that after review of the concept plan submitted by the NTN property use request, the Planning Commission finds the request meets the intent of the master plan due to encouragement of all-season natural resources recreation, better access to public open space. The proposal is consistent with the recreation plan and the Hartwood plan and the approval of the Parks and Recreation Board with the following conditions. One, that the applicant receives a variance to maintain the gravel parking lot. Two, the conditional use permit is granted to allow the use. Three, and three, that there is a review of a maintenance agreement by city staff. The request was then reviewed by city staff to evaluate various options supporting implementation of the plan. Staff met with the NTN on June 19 to discuss the project, and it was agreed to by all parties that the license process would allow the fastest realization of the project with no expansion of costs borne to the city of Marquette. Please see the attached for a complete packet of the background information compiled for the PRAB and the Planning Commission. Fiscal effects, the NTN will assume responsibility for all long-term maintenance costs, which are projected using a comparable city asset management baseline at approximately $9,376.68 for annual building maintenance, with additional building maintenance costs of $2,000 every other year and $10,000 every 10 to 15 years. An additional cost that could likely be incurred at some time in the future is the extension of water and sewer for $220,000 in $2,013,000 should utilities be desired inside of the building. If permitted via a license, it is recommended that the city waive the $100 per year fee and that the construction and maintenance of the structure is consistent with the city master plan and recreation plans, the Hartwood Forest Plan and recommendations, and will result in an asset that will enhance the prestige of the city. Recommendation, permit the structure via a license to use the U.S. city property subject to the NTN obtaining any necessary permits and approvals, waive the license fees, and direct the city attorney to prepare the license. Alternatives as determined by the commission.
Thank you, city clerk. At this time, we have three gentlemen that want to address this. Whoever wished to come up first is... I think he'll probably want to wait till you're done. Mr. Ferro?
These are my opinions. This soon, we document another example of the impact that increased public use causes to an area, the very item we're handling now, a needed facility that will receive plenty of use and eventually too much. Your supplement indicates today's cost to run plumbing to the structure of $220,000. Of course, this is not part of tonight's decision, but the lot and the structure are clear indicators of the pressures that will one day pervade South Marquette. We'll see development on all buildable private lands clear to the Trailhead and beyond unleashing yet more use upon the area. A full 75-car lot will empty probably over 100 people onto the trails, plus as many more will arrive on bicycles and foot. Eventually, Trailhead's development and public accesses will surround the entire... it will survive... Are you with me, Johnny?
I'm watching, staring right at your eyeballs.
Yeah, about half the time. Eventually, Trailhead's development and public accesses will surround the entire preserved area, so much for solitude. Bikes and snowmobiles will pose a safety hazard to hikers, and soon every pursuit will require its own space. That's when future commissions will realize how finite the area is, and they'll ask why you people so lack the obvious vision to seize this once-in-a-lifetime chance to do it right, to preserve much more, especially when notified of the consequences ahead of the vote. The approval of this Trailhead is a reminder that much more preservation is necessary. Regardless, this facility is needed and itself impacts little upon the scenic portions of the terrain. However, it's an early reminder of what's to come and how a Trailhead access near the Preserve's east boundary can one day impact the Hartwood picture as a whole.
Thank you, sir.
Lyle Vander Skaaf, 235, here on Woods Drive. Again, as the chair of the NTN Single Track Committee, I'd like to thank all the members of the commission and city staff that have worked with us over the last year to put this proposal together. I am eager to see that we're hopefully approaching the end to where we can actually start construction on this project. And like the previous speaker said, I think that when the facility is there, we're going to see a lot of use, and that's what our goal for it is. We have a lot of people coming out there to use the trails and having a place for them to meet before and after using the trails, as well as change and use the facility that way will be very welcome. Just to mention, you know, it was brought up, questions about eventual use of the utilities and things like that and running those out there. At this point, the project, just to remind everybody, the project and the proposal does not include any of that. Certainly, we would like to look at that again at some point down the road, but for tonight and for the present, we are asking just for the simple structure as that will meet the needs that we currently have. If I, I assume everybody here is fairly familiar with it, but I'd be happy to answer any other questions about where we stand with the project as well.
My name is Daniel Mead, 150 High Point Court, Marquette. I'm an attorney working for Gabriel Mead and representing the NTN, here to answer any legal questions that you may have, if there are none. Thank you, your time and attention to this matter. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. And that was the last person that wanted to address this item. Commissioner Ryan?
Finished?
Okay, go ahead.
I was just going to move that we permit the structure via a license to use city property subject to NTN obtaining any necessary permits and approvals, waive the license fee, and direct the city attorney to prepare the license.
Thank you. Commissioner Naimi?
I'll second the motion, Your Honor.
Thank you. Commissioner Ryan, anything further?
You know, I was a member of a committee which started talking about this some time ago. The manager was part of it. I think Jason was part of it and probably former Commissioner St. Ange, I think. And this all started out with the NTN attempting to buy some land to accomplish this goal. And after a lot of discussion and some recommendations from the manager, this plan was arrived at, and I think it's a good one, and it gives us an opportunity to move forward and develop this structure. And, you know, the NTN has made major contributions to our community, and I think this is a very good project.
Thank you. Commissioner Naimi?
I would echo the comments of Commissioner Ryan, and I think this project could develop just like the North Marquette soccer fields, where we have a private nonprofit group that will help us develop this, and it will be at a good, it'll be a good value for the city and for the greater market area.
Thank you. Commissioner Convancy?
Well, I just have a few questions. I'm in support of the project, however, my only concern is right now the city has really kind of halted looking at all the parcels of land in the Hartwood. You know, we've kind of sectioned off some. We haven't dealt with the red and purple areas, and there are some exciting opportunities, hopefully with the DNR and some land trusts that we'll be hearing about soon at our meetings to preserve a large quantity of this land. But right now, what we've been looking at are basically sections of land. And, you know, every planner knows that you don't really plan on 40s, and so my question is, you know, if we go ahead and approve this and we start planning the red and purple areas, you know, will the structure, can it be moved? Can it be moved to even increase your parking or put it in a better place that's more safe? I know there were some questions about where the Trailheads cross 5... across the highway 5... I'm drawing a blank here. 553. You know, I guess those are my questions because I think, you know, as we, you know, really take a good, hard look at this, and I'm hoping we can do this in the next six months, would we be rushing by putting this, I guess, where you want it now? Or if all the money isn't raised, can we look at how to plan and preserve this land and, you know, come back at it in the spring?
City manager?
Anyone's willing to?
Thank you, Your Honor. The licensing method that we chose specifically includes, and we had this discussion with the NTN, specifically includes an opportunity to revoke the license at some point, which would mean the structure would either have to be dismantled or its disposition would be subject to discussion between the city and the NTN. And so actually, what the license will allow is, rather than having them purchase that whole piece of property and begin the debate that we've discussed previously with the commission about the ambiguity around what the current zoning for that property was and all of the recommendations from the earlier effort, the city will continue to control and own all of the space. The actual portion that they're being licensed is the footprint for the building that they'll put on it. And so the city will maintain control of the parking lot, all of the management of the area for waste management, the snow plowing, things like that. And the only thing that we're really giving them is the ability to use the footprint of land under where they would propose to put the chalet. So it doesn't change any of the zoning, doesn't change any of the recommendations. The duration of that structure could be for quite some time, depending on how the rest of that dialogue rolls out in the city, or it could be subject to some other discussion that we would have at the NTN. And I also like to thank the members from NTN. They've been very patient, and we've had a lot of candid discussion about how best to resolve this issue while trying to maintain the balance that's encoded in all of those community recommendations. And they've been very willing to accommodate the city's interests. So this approach will provide for the maximum opportunity to manage that structure along with the potential that policy in the future could change.
Thank you. Commissioner Convancy?
Well, I understand that. I think we're all on the same page here. I guess my question is, is, I don't know, I guess, is it planned to be put up this fall and then?
Regarding a couple of the quasi-legal questions, can it be moved? Any structure can be moved. The foundation probably wouldn't be able to be moved, but the structure itself could be moved, subject to city manager, Mr. Vida, what he indicated. Regarding the intent, you know, as it currently sets, that is the Trailhead. That's what's been voted upon. That's what's been slated for. So we're within that, but it does. The license allows to meet the flexibility that if you do decide to revoke it as a commission, that is within your privy and right to do so. And then we would enter into conversations of how, where, else it might go. So those are the questions that I heard you ask. I hope that they answer them sufficiently. If not, you can follow up, and I'll try to do a better job of answering those.
Well, let me ask another question. If you could put this pavilion anywhere on that land, where would you ideally want it?
There. Where it's currently, we have a, as part of the packet that's been presented to you, Where it's currently, we have a, as part of the packet that's been presented to you, there is a site plan. That is the parking lot that everyone turns into off five-five-three. That is the trailhead. That is where the trails clover off each other. That is the central location of our trail system. So that is the site.
I'm just asking more of, one, for a safety perspective, two, if another site, moving it one way or the other, might give you more parking, allow you to, you know, be closer to where current utilities are, I guess, I guess I'm asking, is it just because your trailhead's there and you don't want to move it? Or is there anything more desirable as we move ahead in the coming months?
There's a guy behind me that is the trail better that probably could better answer this question, but when you build trails, you build trails off one another, so that they clover off each other, so that they're centrally located. So when you start, you can ride the trail system. So the question that you're asking is, would it be better to be located someplace else where it's closer to utilities? The answer might be yes, but that isn't how the trails have been currently designed. So not are you, only are you talking about moving the trailhead, you're talking about moving all the trails as well. So I, I don't know if you've had, ever had a chance of an opportunity to go out, but all the trails clover off one another. So that is because of the use that's been used for thirty-plus years, that is how the trails have been designed from that centrally located spot. Does that answer your question?
It, it does. I guess I didn't realize moving a trailhead, you know. I, I see how they're all connected, I've used them, I've been on them. You know, my question is more of a planning question, not a, you know, that's where we have our trailhead, but, you know, I'm looking at this as...
I think you're asking the question from a development standpoint, and there are many ways that you can address that. Do you first put in the use and then have development come in around it? There's multiple ways to answer that, I guess. So the only thing that we're kind of looking at and trying to not get into that discussion, and that's where Mr. Vida's excellent idea came forward here, along with Dennis Stackwich's idea, that giving us a license allows you still to have that flexibility, that if you deem, planning-wise, that that is not appropriate, then you have the ability to revoke that license, so that you can plan as a commission to utilize that space for what the city of Marquette's people decide that that's for.
Right, and I understand that. I'm, I'm just saying in the next, I'm, I'm guessing this is going to come at us fairly quickly, in, in six to eight months, I hope we have a lot more of this land planned. And so what I'm asking you is, are you in a hurry to get this thing up this fall, as soon as possible, or if we go ahead and change it?
Our intentions is that we are currently fund-driving fort, earmarking funds to be returned if we were to be denied. So our intention is to have it up this fall.
Okay, and I don't think anyone's intention is to deny it. I guess what I'm trying to do is kind of ebb and flow what we've got coming at us to try and help you maybe position yourselves, or the parking lot, or entrances, exits, for safety and whatever, so that we don't have to move it, or there's more collaboration. I guess that's where I'm trying to ask the questions, is just...
So, so you're talking from a standpoint of entering and exiting on five-five-three, if it was deemed to be unsafe, and the interest needed to be moved?
Well, or if, if putting a permanent structure and getting utilities there, I mean, if it could be, I guess, more appealing to the city, for taxpayers, for the money spent, wherever it's coming from, I guess, I like planning, so that things don't have to be moved, or we don't have to spend more money than we have to. So I guess, there seems to be a huge rush to get this up, where I think our entire commission is very supportive of it. I guess we've got some huge planning exercises that are going to start coming our way with the land, and I guess, I just get the feeling that you're worried that if you don't get the structure up, that we're gonna...
No, that isn't the...
Sell the land out on both sides of you or something.
That isn't the intention at all. We've been working on this for almost a year now. So for you to say that we're in a rush to put it up, we're not even through the, the approval process yet. So, I mean, there's still some work to do. I mean, you have to approve the idea. We have to go back to the Planning Commission and still go through that approval process regarding the blueprints. So it's, it's not like it's going to be up in a month, two, or even three. So we're, we're thinking late this year. So if there is the ability to work together regarding the planning of it, we are all, all ears, and I think Mr. Vida could speak to this, we're more than willing to work with the city commission regarding, working with that, so that the, the building wouldn't have to be moved, or a different location wouldn't have to be approved. But that's part of the Planning Commission as well, that we would go through their process. Is it safe? Is it appropriate for, you know, a location for utilities to be run or not? That's part of the Planning Commission process. So we're just kind of looking for the idea to be approved, so that we can go back and go through that process.
Okay.
City manager?
Thank you, Your Honor. Only to reiterate again, Commissioner Ryan's earlier comments, and this has been before the commission for almost a year now. When I originally became involved, it was almost ten months ago, to try to address the concerns Commissioner Cambancy has raised, which are really about ownership and potential future conflicting uses for, for the area. And there are a lot of people who are very sensitive to the development of the Hartwood Forest, or any of the land uses, independent of any of the recommendations or the zoning that have been done on that property. And this particular area actually resides on a piece that has been identified for potential commercial development. But that being said, there are still many unresolved interests associated with the surrounding property, the character of the environment in that area, potential interest of using some of that property as part of the city's initial recreation authority, and all of those things were taken into consideration. One of the, one of the primary things that, that we sought was a way to work with the NTN to allow them to proceed with this project, in spite of the fact that there are a lot of unanswered questions with the long-term use of the Hartwood Forest and the property. And as I said, they've been very accommodating. This permits them to build a structure on city land, and they have the responsibility for maintaining it up until the point in time when we ask them to take it down or move it. And that's about the quickest and cleanest way to manage the, the property, to manage their end of providing the structure and maintaining it, and to let the process move forward. But it wasn't something that was in any way considered in, in a rush, or, or in any kind of a short circumstance. It's been almost a year since this first came before the commission.
Thank you. Commissioner Cambancy?
Well, and I, I just want to say quickly that I am fully supportive of it, and I'm, I know government works slowly. I think we haven't paid attention to, you know, the Hartwood property, I guess, as much as I would like to, since I've been on here, only that, you know, I think, I think people are waiting, I think you're waiting, and we're moving slower than, you know, what your plan is that we all support. So, you know, my only hope is that as we go forward, I, I hope our plans coincide so that we get it right the first time, so...
And I am an attorney, so I'm kind of used to the slow-moving process. So I, I understand, and, and we're here to work with the city. This is going to be something that is going to be what we consider a gem, you know, that can be provided, and people can use, so...
Your Honor, we seem to be get to a one-way conversation here. I think we get to the point where we should move the question.
Anything further, Commissioner Cambancy? Thank you. Commissioner Snyder?
I would like to get to the question, but I do have a few comments, actually, before we get there. You know, I, I've been a supporter of this from, from day one, I think it's great. To Commissioner Cambancy's comments, I think this is what happens when a city, or even a private organization that owned it before we did, doesn't plan for anything. The community finds uses for it, that ends up being used that way for twenty, thirty years. And so in many ways, our residents have planned it for us, they've been using it for this long, it makes sense to use that space. I, I do understand the concerns, especially if the city goes, goes ahead and does, you know, any sort of incongruent development in that area, you know, we're going to have to deal with that. But honestly, I think this is something the residents have proven over thirty years, that this is what they want. This coming up on the agenda kind of surprised me, because something that's happened before, or since the last meeting with the NTN, and now, was the ATV club vote, and they had come up and, and approached to talk to me personally, and I talked to them quite a bit. And for somebody who hasn't been on an ATV since I was ten, I've never been on a snowmobile, you know, that, that's not my crowd. I'd much rather be out on the trails. But they had approached me, I think in a similar matter that, that the NTN had approached the city years ago, is they have trails out there that, that are not necessarily managed well. There's people out there using the area without permission, without management, or oversight, or signage, or anything like that. And we turned that down, having a trailhead for the ATVs. And where I'm going with this is, I think, and I hope that when the NTN builds this, they recognize that fifteen, twenty years ago, nobody really wanted bicyclists and a trailhead out there for bicyclists. Once it started to be managed and organized and posted by the NTN, I think the, the area got much more groomed, taken care of, cared for, and I think the same thing can happen to the ATV trails. So I'm hoping that motorized and non-motorized use can find a good way to work together in that area. But anyway, those are the only comments I've got. I think, I do think this is a great project, and I appreciate all of the work that you guys have put into it.
Thank you. Any other commissioner at this time? Seeing none, there's a, there's a motion by Commissioner Ryan, second by Commissioner Amy, to accept a recommendation agenda number thirteen, permit the structure through a license to use city property subject to the NTN obtaining any necessary permits and approvals, waive the license fee, and direct the city attorney to prepare the license. All in favor, say yes.
Yes.
opposed? Motion passes seven to zero. Thank you. With that, we'll move to number seven. YMCA addendum to lease agreement, city clerk?
Yes, Your Honor, thank you. Background, the city of Marquette entered into a lease agreement with the YMCA of Marquette County commencing January one, nineteen ninety-eight, for a term of forty-five years. The YMCA has been approved to receive a thirty-five-year, two-point-nine-nine-million-dollar loan from the USDA Rural Development. The loan requires YMCA's lease to run for five years beyond the loan term. In order to, excuse me, in order to meet this requirement, the lease would have to be amended to add an additional ten years to the term, which would extend the lease it to, extend it to December thirty-first, twenty fifty-two. The proposed addendum was introduced at the commission's June ten, two thousand thirteen meeting, and has been revised pursuant to commission direction. Fiscal effect, no, no change in fiscal effect from the previous year's recommendation. Approve a lease agreement addendum between the city and the YMCA of Marquette County through December thirty-first, two thousand fifty-two, and authorize the mayor and clerk to sign the agreement, alternatives as determined by the commission.
Thank you, city clerk. At this time, we have, I believe, ten people that want to address number seven, so if you would like to pick a number, come on up. Thank you.
James Gallant, Scandia. I think to say this, this seems like a pretty straightforward thing, you just need to, you got the facility, it's going to be there, they're doing it anyway, for another thirty years, right? That seems like the no-brainer part. But the part that's important is, I want to ask you to please consider entertaining a point of order on this previous notice thing. My understanding that if you change, he just said that it has been revised since the last meeting, and that according to the rules, previous notice means previous notice of the final language. And if this is a three-million-dollar project, or a loan from the federal government, I think they're going to expect you to follow the rules. And you've done that before on a couple of these. Well, we just need to do it over two meetings. No, it needs the final language over two meetings, so then we can now, we can then see what that is. I mean, has anybody seen, anybody in the community seen any of this revisions? I guess it's in the materials, or, I guess I didn't, didn't get that part. But I do know that the time to do it, and they say in the book, the time to do it is when you're doing it on the record right now. Because he said he gave previous notice, but it has been revised, and that is contradiction of the, the current rules, and that may invalidate this for the federal government loan, once it's halfway in the process, and they kind of figure that out or something, and you might watch this tape and say, hey, dude's got a point. But there was no point of order, and this is a start, actually, he did call a point of order, so the archiving could start today, you know, just say, two thousand thirteen, one. You'd have to go back through the records to January first, or actually, go back to November, and just go from this commission, when you first started, first point of order, whatever it was. Archive it. It's very important that this three-million-dollar...
There, we're talking about the lease agreement?
That's what I said. The con, the lease, approving of the lease according to the rules, and according to the charter of the city of Marquette, is kind of important to the federal government, I think. I mean, you just asked, you have a parameter in there, I'm sure he knows where that is, I'm sure he read it, he researched this subject, didn't he? And he could just read it onto the record, archive it, and you won't have to worry about it again. You'll have a copy of it. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir.
These are my opinions. June tenth, you pulled this item off the consent agenda for discussion, which was fine until Mr. Coyne motioned to consider a lease agreement amendment between the city and the YMCA through two thousand fifty-two. Placing a motion on the table was inappropriate prior to tonight's reading and public opportunity, because the item was never properly listed until the publication of tonight's agenda. Mr. Coyne motioned knowing this, as well as that the vote needed to be delayed until this meeting. Why did he not wait until all those who might wish to comment were afforded their due opportunity to speak now during the intended time? Remember, this wasn't initially listed as a business item on the June tenth agenda. What's the purpose for rushing a motion onto the table prior to the scheduled hearing, other than for someone to get his name on the motion? Even though the likelihood of public injury is low on this item, you'd best stop playing this motions game before it does lead to a consequential mistake.
Thank you, sir. No clapping, no applause. Sir, you have the floor.
Good evening. My name is Don Gresham, I live at nine oh three Wilson Street, and I serve as the Chief Volunteer Officer of the Marquette County YMCA. I'm requesting your support for the lease extension for the Y. And I'd like to preface, preface my comments one minute, just by saying, you know, forty years ago, when I moved up to the city of Marquette from Wisconsin and started a family up here, I thought the city of Marquette was a, was a really good city. And after forty years of living here and raising children, it's really a great city. You know, when we go outside of the city here and we talk to other people, it doesn't take very long before other people realize what a great city we have. And despite some of the disparaging comments you, certainly the commission has heard and has heard, you know, I'd like to commend the city administration and the commission, both past and present, for, for all the good things that you do do. You know, this, this city is not good or great because it is here. It's good and great because of all the things that we collectively, the city citizens, do for it. So I'd, I just wanted to preface my comments on that. You know, the impact of the YMCA goes far beyond the numbers of a, of a spreadsheet. You know, each and every day, we at the YMCA change a lot of lives. We give kids a safe and productive place to, to go to after school. We encourage healthy lifestyles for individuals and for families. We bring support to the underserved in our community. And the Y has, has had a remarkable impact on the lives of, of all the residents here in the city of Marquette and the county. Our work focuses on three areas: youth development, healthy living, and social responsibility. As pertains to youth development, we believe that all the youth in the county of Marquette deserve the opportunity to discover who they are and what they can achieve. We focus on programs for deliveries particularly to Marquette children and teens, so that they can cultivate their values and their skills and their relationships, so that they have better behaviors and become better citizens. With our collaborative work with the Marquette Housing Commission, with the Great Lakes Center for Youth Development, with Northern Michigan's University's Education Department, and the Lake Superior Village... and the Lake Superior Village, we have established an educational mentoring system. For example, at the Sandy Knoll Elementary School, we have helped that school become one of the top-rated elementary schools in the state, moving it up to the state's 83rd percentile rating as they rate elementary schools. Forty percent of the children there receive either free or reduced lunches at Sandy Knoll, and 68 of the children are enrolled in the, in our after-school program, which is provided by the Y at the Lake Superior Village. In the area of healthy living, another, one of the three major focus points of what we do, we have both, the Y has both the responsibility and the capacity to make a positive and measurable impact upon Marquette's health and well-being. But we offer programs that encourage healthy lifestyles, we bring families closer together, and we foster connection with other people and other providers. Our cancer survivor program, which is called Live Strong, is done in partnership with Marquette General, Marquette General Hospital, for cancer survivors to enhance and regain their health. We are the community provider, as recognized by the Center for Disease Control, for the diabetes prevention program, which is an extremely efficient and very successful program. And it affects hundreds of people here in the county of Marquette and millions of people in the nation. We also provide a program called Live Wise, which is helping the early-onset Alzheimer's patients. We have a Freedom from Smoking, which is an eight-week tobacco cessation program. We have a program called Enhanced Fitness, which is a program used for people suffering from arthritis. And we also have 60 other water and land group exercise programs each week. We have a medical director and a registered dietitian, along with several staff members, all with their master's degree in exercise science. And we also provide worksite wellness programs, that we go out to companies and enhance their wellness of their employees and their families, such as the Marquette Board of Light and Power. The Y is really about community building. We had a discussion tonight about fees and community values, and how the discussion about adjusting fees so that the value of the community can be enhanced. And I want to propose that the Y is one of those important facets of how to increase the value of this community. The YMCA is over 160 years old. Our YMCA here is about 15 years old, but we bring to this community through our YMCA the experience of nearly 16,000 YMCA's throughout the nation. We continue to listen and respond to our community's most critical social needs, with a focus on Marquette's most vulnerable populations, its young and its youth, and its underserved populations. Last year, we provided help to over 1,100 households by giving them $186,000 of free scholarships, so that they could enjoy the programs that we offer at the YMCA. The YMCA is a-
Sir, you got one minute left?
Okay, thank you. YMCA is a community, is a tremendous community asset, and we ask for your support to move this project ahead. If we are hindered in our mission, then so is the value of this community. So, help us continue to make Marquette a great city. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else?
Don said that he was focusing on some of the things the Y provides, and was not going to focus on the spreadsheet. I'm going to give you some of the economic impact, or the spreadsheet information that you as commissioners may want. How does the Y impact Marquette County? Our current economic impact on Marquette County by the Y's spending in payroll, purchasing, and construction costs is $3.2 million. With the addition in 2014, that will be $6.2 million, and then an ongoing up to $4 million annually. The Y has 7,886 members, and 3,647 of those reside in the city of Marquette. The Y employs 178 employees. This provides 1.6 million in payroll annually. Also, according to Pat Black of the Marquette Convention and Visitors Bureau, there's about $40 million spent on lodging revenue in, that's received in Marquette County. Forty percent, or 16 million of that, is attributed to event revenue. Also, during events, a person at the event may spend up to $150 per person on food, entertainment, or purchases while they're in the county or the city. Three events that the Y offers that provide over $250,000 into the county alone are the Killer Whales Swim Meets, the Magic Basketball, and Articat Volleyball Tournaments. Some other events that occur in the city, the Y provides the liability insurance. This is events such as the Bike Jam, the Polar Plunge, the Learn to Ride Program, the Therapeutic Riding Program, the Senior All-Nighter for the Marquette Public Schools, the Criterion Bike Race, and we partner with a lot of other programs to generate millions of dollars for city organizations and businesses. Oh, and by the way, the insurance that we provide for those events, that's free of charge. Few of the organizations that sponsor those events do give donations to the Y in return. We had received a donation during the Bike Jam event recently for $800. The Y provides also $188,000, or $180,000 to 1,110 residents through our scholarship programs, and this allows them then to participate in the Y programs. You heard Don mention some of the things about our preschool, our daycare, our school programs that we have. As a former teacher, I really want to emphasize that there's just dollars that you can't even put a figure on, but what we do know is that's less dollars that need to be spent by the public schools, because that early intervention gives school readiness to children in Marquette County, thus saving money. We also have additional compensation to teens and young adults in the lifetime earnings and experience they get as a result of their work experience at the Y. The Y is the second-leading employer of NMU students. Presently, there's just over 60 students working at the Y, and we're also a work-study placement site. You've heard about the construction loan that will bring $2.997 million to the Y facility for our expansion. That will give us a loan payment of $12,333 for 35 years. We will then, with our expanded facility, we estimate our utility cost to be $68,000 annually, or about $5,666 monthly. So, the difference or the increase in our expense with our loan payment and our operations will be about $18,000, almost $19,000. The Y has already made about a-
One minute.
-$4 million investment on the city property at our existing facility, and we're proposing the almost $3 million of the loan to be invested in city property with the expansion. I want to close and mention that we are a 501(c)(3) organization, and we do not generate revenue for profit, we reinvest in the community. I moved to Marquette 10 years ago, and you know, as Don had said, how his view of the city changed over time. I remember my first year, I was conducting, or composing my Christmas letter, and I bragged about a lot of the things that the town I now lived in, you know, we had, we were a cool city, many of the other names that, or awards that Marquette got.
Thirty seconds.
The Y is one of the things that helps us to get those awards. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, Jenna Zadunik. I serve as the Senior Health Innovations Leader at the YMCA of Marquette County, and I am requesting your support of the lease extension of the YMCA. I've worked at the Y for 11 years, and I'm so grateful and proud and blessed to work for an organization that has such a huge community impact, and really changes the lives of a lot of the people that live in the city of Marquette. I've seen a lot of those, from young children to older adults, in my long time at the YMCA. The Y is really, truly, a part of my family. As Don Grisham spoke about the three areas of development, I'm going to talk a little bit more about healthy living, our wellness, and our health innovations, and how well that'll impact our community as we hopefully expand the YMCA. We know wellness when we experience. It's an overall feeling of health and wholeness, a sense of belonging, the energy to live our fullest life, the desire to continually learn new things and improve our skills, and the chance to contribute and help someone else. We want this for all of our members of the community, and the members of Marquette, the city of Marquette. Living healthy is about spirit, mind, and body at every age and every stage. Our YMCA offers classes and programs for those dealing with chronic diseases, joint and injury rehabilitation, stress and pregnancy, in addition to health assessments and wellness coaching. We have helped over 100 cancer survivors regain their health in our Live Strong at the YMCA program, which is a free cancer survivorship program. We hope with our expansion to help over 100 every year, 100 more cancer survivors per year, if we have the facilities to be able to do that. And we know that diabetes is a serious chronic condition, and that can lead to heart disease, stroke, kidney failure, failure, high blood pressure, and blindness. People living with diabetes know how difficult it can be to maintain their health, and often struggle with doing so. Prediabetes is remarked to be a potentially irreversible condition. It is estimated that 79 million people have prediabetes in the United States, and are currently considered prediabetic. If left untreated, it often leads to diabetes. Managing diabetes is estimated to cost around $218 billion annually. Diabetes prevention programs like ours at the YMCA could save billions in healthcare costs, not only to mention improvements in a person's quality of life. Our Live Wise, that are our early-stage Alzheimer's program, a community collaboration, helps participants and their care partners increase their quality of lives. It gives them hope, and resources, and support to deal with this irreversible brain disease. We also have programs like Freedom from Smoking, Tobacco Cessation Program, childhood weight management programs, adult weight management programs, employee wellness, Enhanced Fitness for Older Adults, pre- and post-bariatric fitness assessments, mind-body stress relief classes, and pre- and postnatal classes. And of course, all of our thousands of dollars we give in scholarships to the people of our community that can't afford. At the Y, all the participants in the program that I spoke about, the programs that I spoke about, feel comfortable, and they're just like anyone else. No one knows that they're any different, or they have prediabetes, or they have cancer, or they have early-stage Alzheimer's. They're in there with confidence, working out like everyone. They have support, and they are a part of our family. If there is a need in the community, we find a way to help. We want to help support Marquette residents to live healthier lives. We have so many goals in the future, but our current facility limits the impact we can make, and the amount of members that we can help. In our expansion plans, we have a health innovation suite, where we can hold all of these programs I just mentioned, where our medical director and registered dietitian, along with lifestyle coaches, will help our members meet their goals. With our future expansion, we will be able to meet more needs of the community, and offer additional programs, so that we can continue to make a positive impact in Marquette. Our future expansion will provide additional space and programs for our community, so we can serve the needs of the community, because no one is turned away at the YMCA of Marquette County. The Y is an incredible community asset, and we ask for your support to move this important project forward. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name's Ruth Almaine. I'm the Regional Director for the UP Office of the Alzheimer's Association. And while I thought I might have to get up and speak on behalf of seniors, I can see that my partners already are well aware of the work that we're doing together with the YMCA. We've been really grateful to help our mission get completed by finding partners like the Y staff, and that their ability, again, to be willing to consider partnering with other agencies, thinking outside the box, and providing, again, opportunities like never before to meet the needs of our citizens has been really crucial. As you all know, as we struggle to find more resources, meet the needs of more seniors, those of us who are running nonprofit agencies, need to, just by virtue of the numbers of baby boomers that are arriving, that we need to serve more people than ever before with the same or less money. So, our ability to carry out our mission really requires us to be able to share resources, share money, share staff, share the vision, and again, to continue to meet the needs of the folks in our communities. While we first created a program called the Baby Boomer Expo, when I first started working with the YMCA, what became quickly evident was, again, what they wanted to do was see how else they could continue to fulfill their mission and meet the needs of our citizens. The ability to go to the Y and say, what do you guys think about this? You think this might be possible? Could we dream this up and make something good for people? And that the first thing they're going to say is, yes. Yes, let's think about it. How can we do that together? I think, again, as they've talked about, one of the gems of Marquette here is that we have folks like the YMCA, who are willing to help us dream about that. We've partnered with them to help have a better location for our fundraiser in the fall called the Walk to End Alzheimer's. For us, it's our biggest fundraiser, it's been an incredible opportunity, again, to use their facility and their support for that. Most recently, I approached the YMCA to partner with us to consider how we might meet the needs of people living with early-stage Alzheimer's. And we know that those folks, again, are folks that don't normally seek resources, they maybe don't even seek medical attention. And so then, how did we reach out to those folks and find a way? Well, lots of people go to the Y. Everybody works out at the Y. It's something normal, it's what we do. I'd seen the incredible things their staff had done by their willingness, again, to be kind to people, to be welcoming to people, to get really smart about the services they provide, and I thought maybe they could help us do that, too. And what started as a partnership just with us and the YMCA, expanded to the Brain and Spine Center at Marquette General Hospital, and the Lake Superior Palliative Medicine Program. We created a 12-week program, and I say created, as far as we know, it's just us here in Marquette. We started it, we're doing our best to keep it going. We weren't sure if anybody would come. We had seven people sign up, who have early-stage Alzheimer's, and their family members who came. It was a 12-week program, we got to week 10, and they said, we're not going to stop. We need you guys to help us and keep going. So, part of what we did was provide, again, education and information. We provided them access to resources. We brought in a lot of speakers who volunteered their time, doctors and lawyers and other nonprofit agencies, knowing that what we wanted was people to have access to information and resources. Because I can tell you the devastation of Alzheimer's. After 65, one in eight of us in this country has it, doubles every 10 years, after 85, one in two. But what we want to do is talk about quality of life, and about living with diseases, and doing the best we can, and giving people the support that they need. And part of what we were able to do with the Y's help, and with many people here, staff members sitting here, was that we helped those folks create a community right there in the room with us. They're still connected to each other, they're connected to us as agencies, we're going to continue to partner with them. And what I, the best thing I can say is, one of our participants said to us, over and over and over, did you ever imagine it would be this good? And we would look at each other and staff and say, we had no idea, other than we felt like if we had the right people in the room, as staff people, if we had the right mission, and kept our eyes on the prize, again, we could continue to meet folks' needs, reduce their isolation, and hope them, help them have a better quality of life. And I can find no better than the partner, partner than the YMCA in this, and I ask you to support this motion as you have it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi. My name's Paul Grenden. I've worked locally here in healthcare for the last 10 years, oftentimes hand-in-hand with the human service industry on many different fronts. And although my path has crossed with the YMCA countless times, you know, when I'm wearing that hat, now, I'm here not only because of that, but because I'm also a single father of two little girls, and the Y has provided support for me and my family on so many levels. At a time that we're facing such a dissolution of the American Standard Family, I've been able to find so many resources, so much support through the YMCA, through also, not only the children, the early childhood development program, but all through the years, the work that they're doing in the schools, you know, Don and they did a great job, kind of reviewing everything, all the programs that are out there, that they currently support. But one of the things I want you to take a look at, when you look at those programs, is that they're not competing programs. They are community needs that the Y, through their strategic planning processes, stepped up and identified, and worked to create for this community, for our community. And that's a really important component. Working in healthcare, we don't view a lot of what they're doing as a competition, but it's filling in the gaps and the holes, that the most vulnerable parts of our current population are falling through beforehand, and they need all the support they can get moving forward to carry on their mission as a nonprofit, the work that they do. And I hope that you consider an investment in the YMCA, not only an investment in an agency, but an investment in a group that's stepping up to meet the community needs, an investment in our most vulnerable population. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
consider an investment in the YMCA, not only an investment in an agency, but an investment in a group that's stepping up to meet the community needs, an investment in our most vulnerable population. So, thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Good evening. My name's Ann Sherman. I'm a board member with the YMCA, and I met a number of you when I was a participant in the Lake Superior Leadership Academy a few years ago. I was very honored to be asked to be part of the board of the YMCA at the time, three years ago, and I said, "I don't know what I can offer you. I'm new to the community, and I've not been here yet six years in the city of Marquette." And I found that the Y was a place that enabled me to come and to be immediately part of the community, to understand what was important here, what was happening with our citizens, to understand what the economic issues were, and to understand what the needs were. And as part of the board, one of the things that I've really emphasized is the need to ensure that we're paying attention to our later youth, those students and those individuals who are 16 years old, up to maybe age 25. Because I have two sons that are in that age group, and I think that they oftentimes get lost. There are not programs available for students of that age. Once they hit 16, everybody assumes they don't want to participate anymore. And I don't find that to be the case with my own kids and their friends, who are a great group. I love hanging around them. But the Y provides them with an opportunity to not just participate in sports things, if that's what they're interested in, but more importantly, to volunteer and to become part of that belongingness that I think that age group so often gets lost. Again, we assume they're not interested, and they only have virtual friends on Facebook, and they're not really participating in the real life of the community. But the Y provides that. It lets them volunteer. It lets them be part of all different age groups, to work with very small children over in the playhouse, and to interact with seniors, who oftentimes are maybe unusual people to them. Their grandparents may be far away. But the Y is a place where everybody in the community of all ages can come together and be part of that group, and for that group of age citizens to understand what it's like to be part of a community and to be part of a larger whole, to have empathy for other people besides themselves and their own little, small group of compadres. The other thing that's important is to think about what kinds of opportunities it gives people when we're employing them at that age. As was said earlier, there's an economic impact to the 60 students from Northern who are part of the work-study program. But it's not just the fact that they're making money. It's the fact that they actually get to come to school here. Those 60 students who are part of work-study means that they had a need that was unaddressed by their own family circumstances, and that lets them come to this community. It brings their families to the community, and it helps them understand what it means to get a job. I am a human resource professional, and I can tell you, it's very difficult for students who are coming out of school who have no work experience. So aside from the basic financial impact of these opportunities that we're providing this group of students, we're providing them the chance to say, "Yes, I've held a job. Yes, I understand what it's like to be part of working life. I know what it means to come to work on time. I understand what it means to be able to get along with people that you work with, and I understand what it means to be a productive citizen and pay my taxes." And that, to me, is something that I see as I counsel students how to get my first job. If they have no work experience, I can tell you, they have a really hard time breaking into the workforce. And this is something that we provide that's far beyond just the economic impact of paying them a salary. It gives them a leg up on getting their next salary. It gives them a leg up on understanding what it means to be a citizen and producing in our community, whether they stay here or go elsewhere. And I appreciate your support of this particular initiative. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Karen Carroll. I, too, am a board member. And what Ann had to say regarding employment for the YMCA, I had no idea it was going to affect me this way. My, I may have to wait. The YMCA has been a very important part to my entire family, myself as a volunteer. My son, who is a college-age student, who, being a teenage in this community, there hasn't been a lot of great places for the kids to go. He became a lifeguard, and, wow. So anyway, my son, actually, this year has had the opportunity, through the YMCA, to be a part of the waterfront program for the YMCA of New York. So for the second summer, he's, because of his experience locally, he's had the opportunity to experience the YMCA on a broader level. I have been a board member for the YMCA for the last four years and in a fun development role for the YMCA. And it's a very important part of our community in terms of what it does for the youth. And I really hate to see, as I was looking through some of the notes, as far as how some of the cost-sharing, being a nonprofit organization, we are always stretched, the budget is always stretched, to figure out where we're going to be able to fund all of these incredible programs that everyone has talked about. And to see some of these parking lot maintenance issues be part of the revision that may become the reason that we cannot move forward on this is something very disturbing that I think we shouldn't, it shouldn't keep us from moving forward. It's very small dollars in the big picture, but at the same time, we can't afford to have that budget eliminated. $2.99 million is a lot of money for us to work with, but at the same time, we are still working with very limited budgets in order to be able to provide all of these wonderful programs. And I just really urge you to consider adopting and moving this forward and allowing us to go ahead and get this expansion underway, so that we can continue to reach out to as many individuals as possible. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm going to try not to get as emotional. My name's Jay Peterson. I'm a member of the YMCA of Marquette. I'm also a volunteer coach of one of the magic programs, basketball programs. I'm not going to talk to you about spreadsheets, and I'm not going to talk to you about the programs that have been offered. I think you can see it. I think you can, more importantly, feel the emotion that these people have for the facility that they have and the opportunities that are provided for our area youth and elderly and people in general. One of the things that I did want the commission to be aware of is, several years ago, the Michigan High School Athletic Association made a decision to combine or to make the basketball seasons of the girls and the boys at the same time. And I'm not here to debate the good or the bad of that, but what it did create, and that what people can't dispute, is the fact that there is a significant lack of gym space available for kids and for development. And obviously, I'm speaking from the basketball end of things, but I also know that the Superior Land Soccer Association, the Arctic Cats volleyball, karate, several other programs that take up space, need that gym space to provide these programs. Countless kids at the elementary level are being shorted and beyond because varsity basketball, JV basketball, kind of takes precedence, and so on down forth. When we are done with those types of programs, city leagues and other opportunities, volleyball and basketball programs that are not available, because there's just nowhere for people to play. What this expansion will do, and what it will allow, is, that is in the planning, is for these programs to take place at a higher level. What I envision, what my excitement level is, is tournaments and programs that bring people into the community and offer kids more opportunities to play. I'm hoping that the commission can find the support to do that. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Good evening. My name is Matt Deal, 438 West Michigan Street, and I am the Community Engagement Leader at the YMCA of Marquette County. I want to preface my statement before requesting support for lease extension by telling you that I am not a native of Marquette. I did not grow up here. I'm actually from the Chicagoland area, and I went to school at Northern. And I got a job at the YMCA to get me through college. That was just the point of it. What I got out of it was a lot more than that. It was more than a place to work. It's a place of community. It's a very special place in my heart. You know, I've only been here for a short time, but I've experienced and met a lot of people who have not only changed my life, but have had their lives changed because of the YMCA. It's quite a rare place, and I want to kind of take you through what a walk-through of the YMCA might be like on any given day. As you walk through our front doors and are greeted by our wonderful staff at the front desk, you might peek into our tot-watch area and notice kids working on arts and crafts. As you continue down the hall towards our lounge area by our kids' gym, you might notice that there's a group of girls learning how to do gymnastics and do somersaults and climb rope, that sort of thing, learning, enhancing skills, trying to make their lives better. Further down the hall, you'll notice our group exercise room, where there might be a group activity going on, like yoga, spin, zumba, where a group of people from the community get together and get to be their own community within the YMCA, and get to achieve a healthier lifestyle, be a family with each other, and create friendships that last a lifetime. Going down the hall, past the locker rooms, you'll notice our Wellness Center, which has our treadmills and our ellipticals and our weightlifting machines, where you'll see people and kids as young as 12 years old, all the way up to 85 years old, working on their fitness and trying to get healthy and make their lives better, not only for themselves, but for their families, for their community. It's just an all-encompassing place. You'll head down the hall, go to the basketball court, and you might notice that a family karate class is going on, or that a magic basketball practice is happening, or where an Arctic Cats volleyball practice is happening. And this is where families come together, kids come together, grow, learn, learn skills that you can't teach in a classroom. It has to be in a different setting like the YMCA, where we have educators and coaches like Jay, who help kids grow into young adults and learn wonderful values in life. From the basketball court, you might head down the family locker room and special needs locker room, which is available to all patrons. Groups from Marissa come and use that locker room as well. We'll go down to the swimming pool area, where there's a parent tot swim class going on, where kids as little as six months old are getting in the pool with their parents for the very first time, learning the skills and learning how to be comfortable with the water. We live off of a lake, and those are important skills that can't get started earlier enough. From there, we'll look at the lap lane in the pool, and there will be a aqua aerobics class going on, where a group of about 15 active older adults come together every Tuesday and Thursday and work on their fitness in the pool together and become a community on their own. What we promote at the Y is something that really can't be, you know, spoken through on spreadsheets. It has to be told through stories. I recently received an email from a family who had moved away from the area, and I was, I'm able to share this email with you guys, and I want to do that. "We miss our Marquette YMCA so much. I hope the staff and the patrons at the West End are just as great. We have had so many great memories and experiences at the Marquette Y, and it's hard to even name them. Both Garrett and Brooke learned to walk in the kids' gym, doing the 5K runs in the snow, rain, and sleet, math lessons in the lobby, volunteering during the shutdowns. Most importantly, we miss the great conversations with the attentive staff, attentive and concerned staff. I know without the YMCA staff, my life as a homeschooling parent would have been more difficult. The Y was also a huge daily part of Sharon's life when she, while she stayed at home with the kids. The tot-watch staff is a little slice of heaven for a stay-at-home parents. When Sharon and I broke the news to the kids that we were going to move, Garrett's first question was, 'Is there a YMCA where we're going? If there's not a Y, I'm not going.'" From his response, I know that everyone-
Karen, you've got one minute.
Thank you very much, Jenny. "From his response, I know that everyone at the Marquette Y has left a profound impression on the McFerrin family." That's just one story out of dozens and dozens and hundreds of stories from thousands of members that have been positively impacted by this place. And I strongly request your support for lease extension. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir.
Good evening. I just have a few things to say.
Name and location.
Please, Saucumstiru, 1330 Woodridge Avenue, and I'm the CEO of the YMCA of Marquette County. I appreciate all those folks who came this evening in support of what we're trying to do to better Marquette. As was stated earlier, I think we bring really good value to Marquette and the citizens of this community. No one has turned away at the Y, and the value of that, I don't know that you can put a dollar on some of the things that we do. 20% of our membership live within five minutes of the Y and make under $24,000 a year. Poverty is real in our community, and a lot of folks don't recognize that. And the Y is here to provide those folks that can't afford to be part of something to be part of the YMCA. I think Don gave you a lot of information. Cheryl gave you a lot of financial numbers. If you have questions, I can answer the questions. I don't need to speak anymore. I think they spoke volumes of what we're doing in our community. So thank you.
Thank you. Commissioners. Commissioner Cohen.
Yes, Your Honor, I would like to make a motion to approve a lease agreement addendum between the city and the YMCA of Marquette County through December 31, 2052, with the deletion of the provision in item number six in the agreement, lines two through seven, all regarding the snowplow expense, and authorize the mayor and city clerk to sign the agreement.
Thank you. City clerk, do you have that? Is there a second? Commissioner Schneider?
I'll support that.
Thank you. Commissioner Cohen, may I take further?
Sure. I took some notes, a lot of notes. Thank you all for your great explanation. And I made this motion, kind of, it's contrary to the motion I made at the last meeting, but the reason I made the motion was to get an agreement on the paper going and a negotiation going. Just the idea of my doing it to get my name is just plain stupid. So I did it for that reason, and I think it was successful. In that intermittent period, I have gone to the Y. I've joined the Y after spending a long time there, and I've heard all those speeches from varied people. Included in that, I've heard it from lots of community members who really feel that you do a tremendous job, and it's perhaps not appropriate for us to use this opportunity to renegotiate some more stuff out of you, money stuff. The reality is, and my thoughts over these two weeks are as follows. I use an example. If I lived in Turville Apartments, and I know I'll get flack from Tom Turville about using this, but if I lived in the Tour Villa, and I called Tom up and said, "Tom, I would like to build a $7 million community recreation center and employ 170 people on your little back lot there at Turville, and just, how do you feel about that?" And Tom would say, "Well, that's great, Mike, but you know, I'd like to talk to you about the snowplowing that we do at your apartment. Somewhere, that's just lost on me. That's just not fair. It doesn't make sense." So, excuse me, I really think that what you have spent the past half hour describing is something that the city would not be capable of providing, period, even with our great resources and surplus of $180,000. We could not do any of that, and we ought to really continue a very strong partnership with you. I think the opportunity that you've had tonight will hopefully encourage other people to want to join this community that you've described. And also, hopefully, you're going to have a capital campaign to help pay off the $20,000 a month rent or mortgage payment. And then, that $20,000 is really only $19,000, but with the $1,000 a month, then we've upped it to $20,000 a month. That just doesn't seem fair, and I'm regretful that I made the kind of motion I did, but I did it mainly to get an agreement before us. So I would hope my commissioners would be swayed by your passionate description of what you do for the city, and I would hope that you would support this motion. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Schneider.
Well, as you know, I was not here for the last meeting, but having the chance to read through the minutes, I'll start off by saying that I concur with a lot of the concerns that were expressed, and I hope it's something that the Y hears and that the city staff hears. But besides that, I really, I think that what the Y is doing for everything that was listed and more is an incredible asset to the community. I'm always hesitant to sign up a lease that goes until 2052. That seems a little scary. But I understand that it's a requirement to be able to do the work that the Y does, and especially with the expansion. So, you know, even though I do have some hesitation, I think that the benefits greatly outweigh the concerns there. I'm just happy to be able to lend my support to something like this.
Thank you. Commissioner Ryan.
First of all, a question. I'm not sure what the motion entails as far, does this mean the Y does their own plowing, or what? It's just a question. So I know what I'm voting on.
Commissioner Coyne?
Well, what I, what the motion entails is to get rid of this language. "The YMCA and city shall equally share all expenses pertaining to snow removal from all parking areas in the Lakeview Arena parking lot. Snowplow costs will be based on actual costs incurred. Actual costs will be computed annually by the city and provided to the YMCA in the month of May each year. Anytime at that time, the city has the ability to contract snowplowing. The city will provide the YMCA with the right to participate in determining the most cost-effective and efficient option to meet the mutual needs of the city and YMCA." That I deleted from my, from this agreement, and as it stands now, the city pays for, does the snowplowing, and the Y doesn't contribute at all. Is that correct, Mr. Manager?
Yes, sir.
So, it doesn't really change the existing agreement, it gets rid of those words.
Thank you.
Well, I, I guess I'd like the attorney to verify that, because we are removing language pertaining to snow removal, and if we're, if this is replacing the previous agreement, I, I just want to know for sure what it is we're doing.
Yeah, I'm looking at the agreement now. The previous agreement was somewhat shorter, said the YMCA shall be responsible for all utilities serving the leasehold premises except for stormwater fees. The city shall be responsible for all snow removal from the parking areas. YMCA shall be responsible for maintenance of the leased premises and compliance with our city property maintenance and life safety codes. So, I'm not exactly sure where Commissioner Coyne drew the line.
Go ahead, Commissioner Coyne.
My point is to delete those lines that I said and leave in that this, or you could put back in what the, the city is responsible for the snowplowing, and that would take the place of that, what I removed, which was in the original agreement.
Right, I understand, my understanding of what you said was that you wanted the original language in the agreement, and you were removing lines that deviated from that, but maybe I'm wrong. Is that correct?
Commissioner Ryan?
In any case, it's still unclear to me, but, you know, this has never been about the Y and what it does in the community, and, and I kind of object to the idea that it was an opportunity to kind of coerce the Y into paying more. Somewhere down the road, you know, maybe it's five years, I, I don't know when it is, we're going to be faced with the idea of, what do we do with the parking lot? And we could have addressed that, you know, in a positive way that benefited both the Y and the city. As it is, it's not going to be my problem, we'll get down the road five years from now, and somebody else will be sitting here, and they can argue about how they're going to repair the parking lot, but it, it might have been nice if we could have planned something for that in advance, not to coerce the Y or, or to put the Y, you know, over the barrel, but, but something we could have worked out together so we had an answer, because day in and day out, the parking lot is used by the Y. Special events, it's used by the city of Marquette, but pretty much, it's used by the Y. Having said that, I give up, the, the city staff didn't see that as important, so, you know, I'm, I'm not going to hold up the project. My, my dispute is with city staff for not, not addressing that issue, but we are where we are. So, I certainly support the Y and support this loan, and, and I'll support this motion.
Thank you. Commissioner Naimi?
Thank you, Your Honor. I just have a question for the city manager. We, we do have a proposed agreement to lease change. Can you kind of lay out what, what transpired to, to present us the gen item that we were presented?
Absolutely, thank you. And I'd like to correct the record. City staff certainly cares deeply about this. We listened to everything that the city commission had to say, and in fact, were mandated by the city charter, section 10-3E, to provide an assessment of our view of the report of highest and best possible use for all of the space that's leased by the, the city, including the potential financial impacts. The commission earlier further put caveats on that by saying that they wanted us to consider including specific things, including snow removal and parking, shared costs and things like that, as well as acknowledging the requirement to act with agility, because as the people from the YMCA pointed out at the last meeting, there are very specific hard deadlines with this, that they're required to sign documents in order to continue to qualify for the, for the financial aid. And so, we sought to work aggressively to satisfy all those requirements and provide the commission with the best possible assessment that we could. In a nutshell, the city believes that the best and highest possible use of the YMCA property is for the continued use of the YMCA. And the financial impact is, we can look at it through a number of different lenses, which I'd like to share with the commission now. We sought to try to understand the historical reasons behind why the current lease was established the way it was, to seek if there was any kind of clarification that we could find in looking at how the commission might have considered the specific value of the YMCA in light of its full contribution to the community, very similar to the kind of discussion that we had earlier with promotional ordinance and with the fee discount ordinance. We sought to address the specific current and planned uses of the parking lot as an asset of the city, separate from the Lakeview property, in the context of the existing lease that we have with Northern, as well as commitments that we know we have endorsed from different committee, city committees and organizations within the community. And then, specifically according to the city commission's guidance, we sought to understand how that quid pro quo played out against existing city requirements, and ultimately, what the value of that might be viewed as, along with all the other things that we're speaking to. And so, let me give you a few examples of, of the assessment of that judgment. If you take a look at any of the leases the city has, it does not specifically call out leasing parking, and those lease costs pretty clearly, in many cases, have not been incorporated in the ultimate lease price that's been assigned to different organizations that are tenants on leased property, nor do we routinely require our tenant organizations specifically to provide for the capital improvement of not only this, the leased property that they have underway, but for common use assets like what the Lakeview Arena parking lot is. So, I've heard commissioners express some concern about making long-term leases at the rates we're proposing. We did so with the Presque Isle Railroad Depot, and this information, again, is public information, it's the front of the city budget, if anybody is looking to go out and verify this on their own. We, we rented the Presque Isle Railroad Depot property, which includes the old Presque Isle Railroad Depot house, the attendant space near it, to a private company called Acorn Renovations, at the cost of $50 per annum for 30 years. We rented two parcels of land to the American Legion, for where they're currently located, at a dollar a year for a perpetual lease to both. We rented the property that the LSCP building currently sits on for $100 a year for 30 years. We rented the Marquette Maritime Museum to that organization for a period of a dollar a year for 99 years. We rented Moosewood and all of the attendant property to that organization for a dollar a year for 10 years. We rented to the Superior Watershed Partnership the Presque Isle Caretaker Residence and excused all rents for the period of three years, plus, we're subsidizing that with other payments for services in lieu. And the YMCA has a dollar per annum lease for 44 years. None of those leases incorporate any specific provisos for parking, clearly do not incorporate parking in the basic cost, and otherwise don't require any of those organizations to pay for capital improvements. The original lease for the YMCA was for a 44-year period. What we're talking about doing is extending a tenure request to support the requirements they presented, based on the federal funding associated with their requirement. It's important to note that although Lakeview Arena is a multi-use facility, there are no exclusive parking arrangements for any of the tenants there. The skate park, for example, does not have an exclusive use for parking. Markham General Hospital, that uses part of that parking lot for their emergency medical services, does not have an exclusive contract for use of that parking lot. Northern Michigan University, which is planning on using the backside of that parking lot for access to the natural area that they've preserved on the corner of Lake Shore and Pine Street, does not have an exclusive access use for that property, nor do any special events that are conducted on the parking lot proper, like the Kiwanis Chicken Dinner. This was previously discussed with the city commission. The YMCA has sought this agreement, and all of the additional work done to address the reverter clause, specifically because the federal funding requires an exclusive use and control of the area for the duration of the lease. We actually looked at that, and as a consequence of all those individual uses, tried to find a way, within the time available, to determine if there would be some consistent access process that we could use to move parking displaced by the exclusive use of the area near the YMCA, and were unable to solve that problem in the timeframe given. It would have required us, in addition to moving all of the individual uses I, I just spoke to, to coming up with some kind of a method for allowing access to the Lakeview Arena itself, because the main doors for accessing the event are specifically and directly located in front of the YMCA's main entrance. And so, providing exclusive use to the YMCA would have meant that we would have had other problems to solve with access to the facility proper. In the past, when we looked at, how would we provide alternative methods for paying for parking, fees were specifically proposed, and I might ask Director Zuger or our CFO to speak to this, as part of cost recovery embedded in the fee schedule. It was proposed, but it was not supported by the commission, that the city charged daily, annual, and event-related fees for parking at Lakeview, which was, again, not supported. The only example I can find of the city commission supporting, charging fees for parking was a request that was made in support of Mattson Park, potentially for them to reserve part of the Mattson Park parking lot for use, for VIP parking as part of the event. Ultimately, they decided not to proceed with that. We also took a look at the previous commission actions and community plans to decide if there were any precedents that might bear on the negotiations. We found that, as part of the Park and Rec Plan that was shared with the community and commission in 2011, that the YMCA is one of the top five used recreation facilities in the city of Marquette. It's managed in a nonprofit way, and unlike other tenants who rent facilities within existing city structures, the YMCA pays for all its operational costs, its maintenance costs, its utilities, and is responsible for all of its improvement costs. Over the last seven to 10 years, there's been a transmission, a transition in city commission views regarding recreational funding, and how it appears to be shifting the costs from the city to partners. This has, at times, created conflict with the views of public recreation being a free good provided by local government to, to all residents in the community, regardless of their ability to pay. However, since June 2008, the commission, the city commission took action and chose to act as a facilitator and public-private partner with the YMCA, as opposed to incurring all the costs of programming at that facility themselves. The YMCA, since that period of time, has assumed direct cost for all of their programming, even when it benefits the city, specifically for things like you've heard this evening from many members of the YMCA community, as well as for the types of initiatives that the city has, from time to time, found important, and I'll speak to some of that quid pro quo in a moment. This has allowed the YMCA to act with the maximum benefit of its volunteers, without the intrusion or specific oversight of city bureaucrats, in accordance with their programming requirements. It's allowed them to use their best strengths, and it's allowed us to use our best strengths and resources, to make sure that although we can't afford to be all things for all people, given our limited general fund, that we're able to, to the greatest extent possible, adopt those interests and model the way that we work together after the best practices they've described. Some of the specific quid pro quo that the city has gotten for that relationship, and at times, since 2008, that's included both trading services and trading facilities for different uses, as well as lowering the fees, both from the YMCA and the city for use of their facilities. At one time, the YMCA managed the skate park. They did so purely in exchange for the use of the community room. That agreement no longer exists, subject to now the city entering into a different agreement for how skate, skate parks are provisioned and supported. We use their facilities for all elections and all polling. Their programming, as you've heard, satisfies many elements of our park and recreation requirements under the city charter. They provide the youth, adult, and senior programming described this evening, as well as stepping up with no cost to the city to provide additional programs such as water safety. They're still considered and have been quoted by the city commission as being the best source for providing water safety training to youths and adults, including swimming and safety techniques associated with non-motorized water sports. For those organizations that choose to rent from the city to conduct their own program, to schedule their own events, the YMCA acts as a partner of last resort. They, they provide for, under their auspices, insurance for non-city events that otherwise might not be available to these community events. And again, in the 2006 Lakeview study, it did not identify improving the city parking lot, that was a six-year study. The commission did not hear from our superintendent of public works, and it did not come up again that the parking lot needs to be paved, it's currently not part of the approved six-year CIP plan that was just adopted in the annual budget. And finally, in addition to the support that the YMCA has received from the city, we thought we would look at other extenuating circumstances to try to get a sense, apart from their direct membership, what type of support and esteem they hold in the community, and it's important to note, and it can be Googled and independently verified, that they are working in partnership with many other partners of the city to do the things that they do, and things that our residents have expressed that they need, including Marquette area public schools, the Marquette Convention and Visitors Bureau, the KBIC, Northern Michigan University, the Marquette County Community Foundation, who maintains an endowment fund for them, as well as countless other people in our community. And so, from our perspective, from the, from past actions that the commission has taken, and from the guidance we were given, our assessment that the recommendation we're making represents the best and greatest use of that property, and we'd ask the commission to support it.
Thank you. Commissioner Naimi?
Thank you, Your Honor. Just to clarify, the, the agreement that, proposed agreement that we received, that that was negotiated between staff and the YMCA, both parties agreed to it?
Yes, sir.
I guess I, the agreement that was recommended, I, I know at the last meeting, I made a recommendation that we, we, we look at participating in snowplowing or, or replacement of the parking lot, et cetera. I found that the, what staff did was satisfactory, and I thought the agreement proposed to us, and, and apparently is, is agreeable, YMCA was, meets, meets the needs of both parties, and, and I guess that's what I would support. I'm not ready to support Dr. Coyne's motion as stated.
Commissioner Coyne?
Well, I appreciate Commissioner Naimi's feelings, but you have to look at it through the Y's eye. I, I can't look through their eyes, but they need this thing signed, and to say, if they, they were kind of up against snowplowing, participating in the parking lot paving, or we're not going to get this project and this money done. So, I mean, they had to do something now, so, to me, it doesn't make any sense to put another $1,000 a month on their already large payment, in terms of they're in a negotiating position. If they say no to everything, then they're, they're, they're stuck. So, that's why I, I, I don't know their thinking, but I would hope that we would not, hearing all of that long talk from the city manager, find, figure out that it is not reasonable to do.
Thank you. Commissioner Stonehouse?
I'll, I'll certainly support the motion by Dr. Coyne, and I, I do that from really one perspective, and that's the investment in community. And when you look at everything that the Y does, and how they do it for the citizens of Marquette, and the opportunities that they offer, in, in my view, this is something that we simply support. When we couple that with the past history of the commission in supporting other organizations in, in similar circumstances, and, you know, that, that the city manager so very eloquently provided, I think it helps put everything in perspective, too. But, you know, we, as a commission, have often complained and pontificated and, and kind of wrung our, our hands a little bit about being unable to, I, I guess, provide services for many of the youth in the community. How do we do that? How do we drive the costs down as, as we possibly can for athletic teams, participation in various sorts? And here we have a, a different way of doing it, based on what the Y does for all of us. And I think this is an opportunity that we should take. And I think this is an opportunity that we should take, because if we look at who we invest in, and how we invest our, our time, our emotional energy, and to this extent, a bit of our money, I think we invest it in those things that return it to us, that return a product to us, and this is an example of that. You know, if you can't invest in yourself, and you can't invest in your own city, who do we invest in? And this is truly, I think, an example of that, so I will very strongly support the recommend, or the, the motion. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Kembensee?
Thank you. I'm going to ask our attorney a question, if I can. I believe at our last meeting, part of what we approved was the fact that we can go ahead and support the extension in the lease and come up with the terms later. Is that correct?
I didn't mention that. I mean, there was discussion about it. I think that's always a bad idea. Why would you enter into any kind of contract and then decide you're going to talk about the terms after you've already got a legally binding document? But I know there was discussion about that, and I don't think any action was taken.
Well, I think it was in case we can't, I guess, agree on what we're discussing now, so that we do not hold the YMCA up. I guess that's...
That was, that was indeed the discussion. Like I said, I wasn't asked my opinion, but I mean, I think that's always risky, because once someone's got a signed deal, what's the incentive to negotiate?
Well, I guess, I'll give my take on this, and I guess I'm disappointed that, you know, it, you know, came out to support this right away, especially given the direction we're going last, the last meeting. I guess I wasn't involved in any meetings between here and there, any conversations, and certainly I would have loved to have had what the city manager read off, but, you know, that comes to us now. You know, I'd like to thank the Y for sharing with us everything they have. Certainly, you do a lot, and I hope you can look at what comes at me as a commissioner from other organizations, other nonprofits, saying, "Look at us, we do the same thing, and we pay you, and you don't help us with anything." A lot of people in the community feel that we can't afford to give these deals. We looked at a $400,000 deficit at Lakeview, and we looked at specifically, what are some things that are causing us to go over budget year after year? And who do we charge, and how do we get closer to breaking even? Because if we're going to spend $500,000 to move the senior center and bond for that, I don't know how we're going to pave a parking lot that's going to cost $500,000 without bonding for that. So that will affect the community, and these are the decisions that people call me about and say, "Are you going to raise my taxes?" Because you're not being proactive right now and using this opportunity to say, "Can you help the city? Because we're helping you." I think one of the best ideas that was brought forward from a citizen to me was the idea of a Lakeview sinking fund that can go towards these things, so that when it comes time to do these big projects that benefit the Y and keep the Y open, and certainly help the city in Lakeview, we're not putting off our summer street projects, we're not doing anything outside of what we're charged as city commissioners to do, to help a nonprofit. These are things we have to do every year. And I think a lot of people in the community are looking at the seven of us right now, saying, "You have an opportunity that you won't have in 45 years, to not only support the Y, because I believe the community is 100% behind you, but you need to go to the table and help make these hard decisions, and negotiate, and say, 'What can you help us do as a city?'" It's not that, that I don't want to support the Y. I think there's another group of people out there saying, "Is this fair? And can more be done?" And so, to me, when the discussion happened at the last meeting about things like the parking lot, about snow plowing that the city takes care of and pays for, I think it's a good time to talk about them, and I'm a little disappointed that now we're pulling it off the table, because I was pretty, pretty happy with what came back to us, and I guess, I guess I'm surprised that now that's being pulled off the table, and we're going out another 45 years. Again, I'm 110% behind supporting the expansion. I'm disappointed that what we got to tonight was pulled off the table.
Thank you. Commissioner Ryan?
I would just say the same thing. I think it's unfortunate we didn't get a chance to vote on the recommendation that was agreed to, and the contract that was agreed to, but I'm not willing to hold this up any longer, and I say, "Let's get on with it. Let's vote and go, and we can't talk about this all night."
Any other commissioner? With that?
Your Honor, just before you do the vote, I just want to make sure I understand Commissioner Coyne's motion. He was striking certain lines. I want to make sure that we've got it, because we're going to rewrite this contract, and I understood he was, he was striking the, the sentence that begins in line two of the proposed paragraph six, and that sentence, all the way, I guess it's six lines, one, two, three, four, five, six lines? Is that right, Commissioner Coyne? So, can you, if I understand you, the first line stays in, "The YMCA shall be responsible for all utilities serving the leasehold premises except for stormwater fees."
And then they should put back in there about the city will be responsible for snow plowing expense, which was in the original 45-year lease.
And that was a part of your motion?
Yes.
Okay. And then it was strict, all the lines were, were struck down to what? What's the next line?
Um...
"The YMCA shall be responsible for maintenance," the last sentence?
Yes, yes.
Okay.
That, that would continue there.
Okay. I just want to make sure I understood it. Thank you.
Commissioner Neme?
Simple way is just throw out this document and go back to what we had the last meeting.
Well, that's not the motion, though.
We have a motion.
We have a motion, and it's not the same document.
It's silly that, to start trying to amend this on, on the dies, when, when it's...
It's not an amendment. It's, this is the motion made by Commissioner Coyne.
No, but we're amending a document that we've been given. The motion amends the document.
No, it's not an amendment, though. It's just change, I mean, that, that was a proposed document.
Right. It changes the document. Rather than doing that, just simply go with the, the original lease.
Well, there's another provision that was added in that I don't think Commissioner Coyne struck.
No, we, we have to have that in there.
Commissioner Kembensee?
Before we vote on this, I'd just like my thoughts to be read into the record, if the city clerk could put this specifically into my comments for this section. I, Commissioner Kembensee, will support the motion made by Commissioner Coyne, with hesitation only from the language that was struck out from the agreement. I wholeheartedly support the lease agreement that was presented to us tonight, June 24, 2013.
City manager?
Just point of order, I wanted to point out, it's five minutes to 10.
Almost 10 o'clock. Anyways, with that, we have a motion on Agenda 7, recommendation. City clerk, do you want to read that back, so we're all on the same page? Sorry about that.
I'll make an attempt. Okay, it was moved by Commissioner Coyne, supported by Commissioner Snyder, to approve the lease agreement addendum between the city and the YMCA at Marquette County through December 31, 2052. Authorized the mayor and clerk to sign the agreement, but with striking, or deleting the portions of Section 6 in the new agreement, beginning with the second sentence and ending, leaving the last sentence of that paragraph in place. See, that would be, yeah, and Provision 6. And I think that's pretty much it.
And putting, and putting back in, "The city will be responsible for snow plowing."
I'll just check in with them, make sure he's got everything. With that, I'll ask the question. All in favor, say yes.
Yes.
Propose. Motion passes 7 to 0.
Your Honor, I move we take a five-minute recess and then extend our meeting beyond the 10 o'clock date.
Support.
10 o'clock hour?
Need discussion?
Pardon?
Needs discussion now?
Discussion on the vote. All in favor, say yes.
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 Propose. Motion passes 7 to 0. Thank you. Yeah. (laughter)[1232.63]
This is Jolly Pumpkin, the microbrewery.
Okay, we're back in session. City Clerk, we will now move to number eight, Mattson Park Bulkhead Fee Relief.
Yes, Your Honor, thank you. Background, the Maritime Museum has facilitated a port of call of the tall ships Peacemaker, Dennis Sullivan, Hindu, and Haley and Matthew for July 19th through the 21st, 2013. The ships will occupy approximately 500 linear feet of dock space at Matson Park Bulkhead. The DDA and the Marquette County Convention and Visitors Bureau and Maritime Museum have partnered to create a community event by providing a maritime experience that allows citizens an image of what the port of Marquette was like during the Great Age of Sail. The Hindu, Sullivan, Haley, and Matthew and Coaster Two will provide opportunities for two-hour sail experiences while a Peacemaker will be available for deck tours. The ships will charge a fee for the sails and the deck tours to help offset expenditures and appearance fees. Normal appearance fees can be as much as $70,000. Fiscal effect, based on current commercial transient rate with utilities for the Matson Park Bulkhead, the mooring cost is $3,330. Recommendation, per the Bulkhead Fee Relief of $3,330 to the Maritime Museum for mooring four tall ships for the period July 19th through the 21st, 2013 at Matson Park Bulkhead. Alternatives as determined by the commission.
Thank you, City Clerk. Commissioners?
A comment?
I'm just here to get a question.
Okay.
Commissioner Neme.
Thank you, Your Honor. I move that we approve Bulkhead Fee Relief of $3,330 to the Maritime Museum for mooring four tall ships for the period of July 19th through the 21st, 2013 at Matson Park Bulkhead.
Thank you. Is there a second? Commissioner Schneider?
Support.
Commissioner Neme.
I think this is a great opportunity for us to see some new ships, and I think the $3,330 won't break us. We are spend-thrift commissions, so we may as well support this. This is a good cause.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Schneider?
No, I think this is a great opportunity. Every time I see tall ships down there, there's always a large group of people, and I'm happy to be able to support it with this.
Thank you. Any other Commissioner Ryan?
And I would just say, we're not spending any money, and we may not even be foregoing revenue because we don't know that anybody would want to park there on that day, so I don't think we're losing all that much.
Okay, thank you. Any other Commissioner? Seeing none, I'll ask a question. There's a motion by Commissioner Neme, seconded by Commissioner Schneider, to accept a recommendation of Agenda Number Eight and approve Bulkhead Fee Relief of $3,330 to Maritime Museum for mooring four tall ships for the period of July 19th through 21st, 2013 at Matson Park Bulkhead. With that, I'll ask, all in favor?
Aye.
Yes.
Yes.
Opposed. Motion passes six to zero. Showing that Commissioner Stonehouse abstained from voting?
Because?
I am, I would like to abstain because I am a board member of the Maritime Museum. And while I derive no profit from the appearance of the ships at all, I would not want to give any appearance of impropriety.
Yeah, I think there's enough of a connection there. It's maybe an indirect financial benefit. So I would, I would be...
If you can find it in financial benefit, I'd certainly appreciate it, but...
You're on the board. Do you receive any compensation from the board?
None.
Oh, in that case, then you should vote.
Well, with that understanding, then I will vote.
The motion passes seven to zero. Thank you, Commissioner.
Thank you.
Move to number nine, City Clerk, Hockey 15 LLC Doing Business as Market Royals.
Thank you, Your Honor. Background, recently, the city received a formal proposal from Hockey 15 LLC Doing Business as Market Royals and copy of their business license from the Michigan Department of Licensing and Regulatory Affairs. Staff reviewed financial and other background information and found no inconsistencies or issues. The owners of the Royals are requesting the commission consider a three-year lease agreement for the space known as the former Rangers locker room and office space in Lakeview Arena. The lease is based on $10 per square foot. As with all leased office space, the LSE shall be responsible for maintaining the premises and shall be responsible for all utilities. Fiscal effect, the Lakeview Arena fund will realize a minimum of $8,700 revenue for the leased space. Recommendation, move the leased space agreement with Hockey 15 LLC DBA Market Royals for office and locker room space at Lakeview Arena to unfinished business. Alternatives as determined by the commission.
Thank you, City Clerk. I believe there is a gentleman that wanted to speak on Agenda Number Nine. City Commissioners. Commissioner Ryan?
I move that we move the lease agreement with Hockey 15 LLC DBA Market Royals to unfinished business.
Thank you. Is there a second? Commissioner Schneider?
Support.
Commissioner Ryan?
I'm in support of this proposal, and this is the way we have to do it.
Thank you. Commissioner Schneider?
No additional comments.
Any other Commissioner?
Just a question. This is not the only revenue we'll be receiving from this group. Do we have an estimate of what we might receive as far as game revenue, or...
Yes, we'll have... Yeah, well, it's approximately $40,000 in ice revenue, and we'll bring that at the next meeting. We were hoping to have them both go at the same time, so...
Okay.
Final approval.
Thank you. There's a motion by Commissioner Ryan, seconded by Commissioner Schneider, to accept a recommendation of Agenda Number Nine and move the lease agreement with Hockey 15 LLC Doing Business as Market Royals for office and locker room space at Lakeview Arena to unfinished... I'll ask a question. All in favor, say yes.
Yes.
Opposed?
Yes.
Seven to zero passes. Thank you. City Clerk, we'll move to number 10, Agenda 10, fiscal year 2013, capital improvement bonds.
Yes, Your Honor, thank you. Background, in order to start the process of issuing capital improvement bonds for FY13 projects, a resolution must be approved that will authorize a notice of intent to be published. The notice of intent serves as a 45-day referendum notice. In accordance with Public Act 34, this public act states that if 10% of the registered electors of the city file a referendum petition within 45 days of the publication of the notice, then the bonds cannot be issued without voter approval. The resolution also authorizes that the city may reimburse itself for expenditures made prior to the actual issuance of the bonds. The language is needed in order to comply with federal tax laws for tax-exempt bonds. Projects approved in the FY13 budget to be bonded for are as follows: Cedar Street, High Street, and East Avenue, $859,521 approved; Aloes Road, Altamont Street, $1,115,272 approved; Curedon Place Sanitary Sewer Pipe, $400,000 approved; Street Improvement Program, $700,000 budgeted; Porter Mill Road, $99,000 budgeted; Sanitary Sewer Lateral Replacements, $140,000 budgeted; Bridge Repairs, $200,000 budgeted, for a total of $3,513,793. Fiscal effect, a debt service schedule will be produced when the bonds are issued. Recommendation, approve the, a notice of intent resolution to issue and sell general obligation bonds in the amount not to exceed $4,500,000 for capital improvements, and authorize the City Clerk to sign the resolution. Alternatives as determined by the commission.
Thank you. Commissioners? Commissioner Ryan?
I move we approve a notice of intent resolution to issue and sell general obligation bonds in an amount not to exceed $4,500,000 for capital improvements, and authorize the City Clerk to sign the resolution.
Thank you. Commissioner Coyne?
Support.
Thank you. Commissioner Ryan?
As the clerk pointed out in providing the background, this is a step that's necessary as we bond for projects approved for construction in the next budget year, in the current budget year.
Thank you. Commissioner Coyne?
Nothing further to add.
Thank you. Any other Commissioner? Seeing none. There's a recommendation by Commissioner Ryan, seconded by Commissioner Coyne, to accept the Agenda Number 10 and approve a notice of intent resolution to issue and sell general obligation bonds in amount not to exceed $4,500,000 for capital improvements, and authorize the City Clerk to sign the resolution. I'll ask a question. All in favor, say yes?
Yes.
Opposed? Motion passes seven to zero. Thank you. City Clerk, we'll move to number 11, fiscal year 2012-13, year-end budget adjustments.
Thank you, Your Honor. Background, on May 14th, 2012, the City Commission adopted a General Appropriations Act which provided for all city expenditures for the 2012-2013 fiscal year. As a part of the normal fiscal year-end procedures, a budget adjustment is prepared in an attempt to keep the city's budget in compliance with various state laws and regulations. The attached schedules show the proposed budget adjustment. Most of the adjustments are due to projects being carried forward from FY 2011-12 and for items approved during the 2012-13 fiscal year that were not originally budgeted for, such as grant-related projects. Fiscal effect, per the attached schedules, recommendation approve the proposed budget adjustment. Alternatives as determined by the commission.
Thank you, City Clerk. Commissioners? Commissioner Stonehouse?
I motion to approve the proposed budget amendment, or, excuse me, to approve the proposed budget adjustment.
Thank you. Is there a second? Commissioner Neme?
Thank you, Your Honor. I'll second the motion.
Thank you. Commissioner Stonehouse?
Only that it's a procedural operation that we need to do.
Thank you. Commissioner Neme?
Nothing further.
Any other Commissioner at this time? Seeing none. There's a motion by Commissioner Stonehouse, seconded by Commissioner Neme, to accept a recommendation of Agenda Number 11, approve the proposed budget adjustments. With that, I'll ask a question. All in favor, say yes?
Yes.
Opposed? Motion passes seven to zero. Thank you. City Clerk, we'll move to Agenda Number 12, refund 2003 water bonds.
Thank you, Your Honor. Background, in 2003, revenue bonds were issued to finance infrastructure projects in the water fund in the amount of $5,990,000. There is currently $1,460,000 in principal remaining to be paid over the next three years. The bond issue can now be refunded, which will result in a net savings of approximately $46,000. The Revenue Bond Act in the state of Michigan does not require a second reading or public hearing for this transaction. Fiscal effect, net total savings of approximately $46,000 in debt service payments in the water fund over the next three years. Recommendation, approve ordinance number 605, an ordinance to refund 2003 water fund revenue bonds. Alternatives as determined by the commission.
Thank you, City Clerk. Commissioners, what's your pleasure? Commissioner Neme?
Thank you, Your Honor. I move that we approve ordinance number 605, an ordinance to refund 2003 water fund revenue bonds.
Thank you. Is there a second? Commissioner Schneider?
Support.
Commissioner Neme?
We'd be foolish not to do this.
Thank you. Commissioner Schneider?
I concur.
Thank you. There's a motion by Commissioner Neme, seconded by Commissioner Schneider, to accept the recommendation of Agenda Number 12 and approve ordinance number 604, ordinance to refund 2003 water fund revenue bonds. I'll ask a question. All in favor, say yes?
Yes.
Opposed? Motion passes seven to zero. Thank you. At this time, we'll move to Agenda Number 14. City Clerk?
Your Honor, that was an added item, so there's no background information.
Okay. Commissioner Stonehouse?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I asked if this could put on the agenda, and I know it's a long night, but I did want to, I think it's important enough that we take a good look at it. A month ago, I had motioned to have a denial of all electronic messaging signs in the DDA area, and that we do that immediately, simply because of what I see is the urgency of the situation. However, the commission demurred at that time, deciding to wait for the formal ordinance to come forward from the Planning Commission that would address EMS. We're now a month into it. That ordinance has not yet come forward. What I'm suggesting and recommending to the commission is a motion that would simply place a moratorium on any EMS signs in the downtown development area, and the purpose of that being simply to do no harm. In other words, we freeze things exactly as they are. That allows the Planning Commission the time that they may desire to continue to work on the EMS ordinance and bring it forward to us. At the time we receive the ordinance, we then can consider it. But in the interval, we don't have folks putting up signs that later we would have to rescind or we would have to deal with on some kind of a grandfathering basis. So I think it would be a very prudent thing to do, but above all, it would do no harm because it simply keeps things as they are until the Planning Commission brings forward their ordinance that would address the issue of EMS.
EMS.
I'm sorry, electronic messaging signs is what I'm trying to describe here.
Okay, thank you, Commissioner Stonehouse. Is there a second? Commissioner Schneider?
I'll support that.
Thank you. Commissioner Stonehouse?
Again, I see it as an ordinance that simply is a safety valve. It simply keeps things as they are. It allows the Planning Commission the time that they need to work through this difficult issue and then finally bring it to us for proper consideration.
Thank you. Commissioner Schneider?
I would actually be in favor of banning them altogether, but I think that a moratorium, for the time being, until the Planning Commission comes to us, is, I think, a safe way to go.
Thank you. City Manager?
Thank you, Your Honor. I've heard a few things, and I think it'd be useful maybe to have clarification from our community development staff, both for any provisos they might want to have added to that moratorium or views they might want to share, as well as understanding of what the current Planning Commission's time schedule might be regarding the ordinance and its referral.
Thank you.
Thank you, City Manager. First off, I hope that can buy a little time for Ron to think about moratorium a little bit because moratoriums in Michigan are very specific. There are very specific things that need to be stated with them, and procedurally, I cannot answer that at this time without doing any research. The Planning Commission has worked on this issue. They have noticed a public hearing that's going to be held on July 2nd. After that public hearing on July 2nd, they will be drafting a recommendation to the City Commission. I can tell you a preview of what they've been working on is that signs, electronic message center signs, their recommendation is that they not be located in the DDA or Third Street, and on top of that, they're limiting them to 15 square feet with a couple other technical things. But the main point is July 2nd is their public hearing. It's already been noticed. It ran, the ad ran in the paper today, which we pay a cost for that. So procedurally, you would see that at your second meeting in July at the latest. And I can't speak to the procedural things about a moratorium. That's a unique animal that there are some requirements for.
Commissioner Coyne?
Could I ask Dennis a question, Your Honor?
Go ahead.
Are there any presently permitted electronic messaging signs that a businessperson in the downtown development area could put up tomorrow to thus avoid having to abide by the proposed agenda?
As of last week, there were none. I have heard a rumor that there is a business interested, which I can't disclose because I haven't verified it, and we have not received an application in the office yet.
Okay. The next question, can I continue?
You have the floor.
Say, whoever that business is, how long would it take for that business to get a permit to actually put the sign up?
We have a 10-day maximum time limit on approval of applications, but it is generally accepted within the law that the time the application is submitted, it is considered to be valid and must be acted upon at the ordinance at the time that it is submitted.
Thank you. In closing, then, to me, I think we should support that to prevent that happening because I think it would create great conflict in the downtown development if three or four businesses did that, and certainly they could do that before all this process would go. So I would certainly support the moratorium and ask that the attorney give us some advice later as to what the rules are.
I have no idea.
I have no idea at this time. I mean, this is the first time it's come up, it wasn't in any written form.
Well, having no idea, what would you recommend that we do?
I don't have a recommendation. I mean, if you want to, you know, this is really in the planning department. I mean, we don't do this without going through certain procedural steps, and now the commission wants to do something contrary to what they normally do. I mean, I don't think that's good advice to give, for me to give, to just ignore the process you've put in place. But, I mean, I can't say this, I sit here, you can't make a motion and pass a motion to outlaw those signs until some ordinance is adopted to that effect.
You say you can't say that, or you are saying that?
No, I can't say that, that you cannot do this, that you can't have a motion to put a moratorium. I just don't know what all the requirements of moratoriums are as we sit here, because it hadn't come up before.
Well, could I continue? Then could you find out for us? Because if we do it, and it's illegal, then the persons who can sue us and put the sign up and be a big brouhaha.
Well, I can certainly research that point. That's not a problem.
Okay.
Commissioner Ryan?
I just think too, there's kind of a vagueness about what this is we're doing, since, you know, we kind of think we know what an electronic message center is, but, you know, does that include a bank time and temperature sign? I mean, you know, I think that's one of the problems of our trying to invent it on the run here, that we, you know, we're... When does it become an EMC, you know? And what is it that we're proposing to stop?
Okay, thank you.
I don't have answers, just questions.
Commissioner Neamy?
Well, I think that what Commissioner Stonehouse is trying to do is, certainly has merit, and I guess if someone's going to run in tomorrow with a sign application, I think we ought to try to forestall that, and I respect the opinion of the attorney that this is kind of out of our typical way of operating, but I guess I would be willing to say, yeah, let's pass the moratorium. It may not fly, but it may fly. And if it doesn't fly, we're not going to be able to stop that errant application sneaking in tomorrow, but we might be able to by passing this moratorium. That's all I have.
Okay. City Manager?
Sorry, your honor. I think Commissioner Cam Benzie was, had first dibs on me, but... My only suggestion would be that pursuant to the guidance we heard from community development, we have a 10-day window if somebody were going to come in tomorrow. The hearing is going to be next Tuesday, which is about six days out. Open Meeting Act notification requires 18-hour advance notice. It would be theoretically possible, even if somebody came into the office first thing tomorrow morning, that we could convene a special meeting for the commission to take action before any final decision on the permitting would need to take place. And I think what you're hearing is the city attorney is sharing, he needs a little bit of time to come back and provide some advice. I believe we might be able to get a special meeting scheduled within the 10-day window that would have a bearing, even if somebody chose to do something tomorrow, that should the commission so choose not to permit these things would prevent it from happening. But I'd only caution that to Commissioner Coyne's input, I would have some trepidation about passing a law that ultimately would have to be tested or defeated in court. That might not do anything to the good result the commission might be seeking. So if it's a requirement to provide the commission with more advice promptly, and then maybe to schedule a special meeting based on the advice of the attorney, I would propose that might be the best way to go.
Thank you. Commissioner Benzie?
I'm thinking a better way to go about this is to just suspend the approval process, extend the permitting from 10 days, probably to 30 days, until we do get... If we can ask staff to do that, to hold off, I think that might avoid dealing with the moratorium, but just more or less saying that we will direct staff to hold off until we've had a chance to review this as a commission.
Thank you. Commissioner Stonehouse?
I thought I heard Mr. Stock would say that there's a presumption of being granted when you apply, and if there's a presumption that the sign, that the permit will be approved, then I don't think we can extend it and expect it to be stopped. I think that's what you said, wasn't it?
It's the presumption of validity of the application. That doesn't mean that it would be approved, but it means that it will be judged on its merit based upon the zoning ordinance the day that it's submitted. Okay? Or the sign ordinance the day that it's submitted. It doesn't mean we'd approve it or deny it, it just means that it'll be judged on what the ordinance says the day we receive it.
I still go back to the original premise of the motion, which was to do no harm, which is pass the ordinance, we put the moratorium, or rather, we put the moratorium down that will in theory prevent anybody from coming in with a signed request, and then if indeed all the scheduling we think is going to happen, happens, we're okay. But we will have done no harm, and that's the primary thing I'm concerned with. If we delay waiting for this to happen, it may not happen. And we have another month for folks out there to legally begin to put this stuff in, and that's what scares me. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Ryan?
I agree with Commissioner Cam Benzie. I think if we were to say we're going to have a 30-day moratorium on issuing sign permits based on further recommendations to the commission from the Planning Commission, you know, we wouldn't be singling out any one kind of sign. You know, I said I agree with Commissioner Cam Benzie, I'm not sure this is what she was saying, but basically, you know, take whatever action is necessary to suspend issuing sign permits pending the recommendations of the Planning Commission. And it makes sense, because if we go to a Planning Commission hearing and it becomes obvious that we're going to move in a certain direction, that could cause someone to move prematurely and make a decision, and, you know, if, you know, this seems like a way we could possibly deal with it. I don't know.
Commissioner Coyne?
I want to talk to the point the city manager made, just to disagree with that. I have a problem with if someone tomorrow asks for a sign permit, and the next day in that 10-day period, we then pass a moratorium. That to me is legally more cloudy than us doing it now preemptively. And the answer Dennis gave is that, you know, we have an existing sign permit now, and if it's done tomorrow, it's going to fall into that one, rather than... So I don't see, and I don't even know, he was shaking his head, that you could extend it. I don't know whether you can do that. But I think a preemptive thing is probably the most productive, even though it has some risk. It's not going to look like somebody does it, and then we pass a moratorium. I think it should be done a moratorium, and then it's there. Okay.
Thank you. Commissioner Neamy?
Thank you, your honor. I agree with Dr. Coyne. I think we have to do this preemptively, and we may be precipitous, but if we're wrong, the attorney will tell us wrong. The person who wants to put up a sign, his attorney will tell us we're wrong, and we'll have to accept that. But perhaps what we might do is forestall a, someone coming in, putting in an application. I don't think we can pass ex post facto laws. Once you put an application, we can't outlaw it, and I, the, what Commissioner Ryan, Commissioner Benzie were talking about, Cam Benzie, were talking about a moratorium on issuing permits, I think would make some sense, except for if we do for 30 days, what about a business who's starting up and wants their sign? You know, it's going to, you know, we're throwing out the baby with the bathwater in that case, but I think it's kind of a unique idea. Pardon? Well, yeah, but we're saying it was something else than bathwater. So, I don't know, I would support doing the moratorium, whether we're, you know, legal or not, and our attorney will tell us tomorrow if we, you know, acted illegally or whatever. Certainly, the other attorney will tell us that we've acted illegally, and our attorney will say, yes, we acted illegally, so, you know. Yeah.
Commissioner Neamy?
That's all I have.
Commissioner Coyne?
Well, tomorrow, when you give us the answer, Ron, I'm just kidding, but...
It's an hour and a half from now, huh?
Okay, well, say you find out this is totally illegal, and what does the commission do then? Does it have to meet again to say, well, or if you just say this is not legal, then it just becomes null and void?
If it's not a legal action, it becomes null and void. It just has no effect.
Okay. Thank you.
Move the question.
What, can we get the question? Because it's been sorted around, I think it was to put a moratorium on enforcement of...
His motion.
A moratorium on electric messaging signs, but I want to make sure we know what it is in the DDA.
... All electronic messaging signs in the DDA area. The moratorium to stay in place until such time as we receive the recommended ordinance changes from the Planning Commission.
Okay. Thank you.
Commissioner Schneider, is that... You agree with that, or?
Yes, I do want to ask one clarifying question. Is it until we receive the recommendation from the Planning Commission, or until we approve the recommendation from the Planning Commission?
You are correct, until we act on the Planning Commission. If we receive it, we take an action at a meeting.
Even if it's a turning it down and sending it back to them?
Yes. Then we would have to reestablish, in my view, a moratorium at that point. Another conscious decision made.
Yes, I support that.
Okay.
Thank you. Just one quick question. Dennis, is electronic message center, is that the verbiage we want to put in there?
That's just what I was going to ask you to consider.
Something better that we could put.
The term electronic message centers did not come up until they drafted sign ordinance amendments recently. So in the current sign ordinance in the city code, I think it's chapter 82, there is no electronic message center or definition of, I think if you're going to do this, you would probably be safer, and I'll look for concurrence of the attorney on this, appropriately, it's sign, call it, try and create your definition of what it is now, rather than calling it an electronic message center, because that definition does not exist. It would, you know, either it would be LED lighted signs, or electronic signs that display messages, or things along those lines. Try and create your definition with what you're working with now, because there isn't one in the current ordinance which has brought us to where we are today.
What if we accept the definition as in the draft ordinance, as presented by the Planning Commission?
And we just do it according to Fred.
Well, I mean, it's defined very well. If we can't recite it here, doesn't mean it's not something valid that we can use or cannot use.
The question was if the commission would be able to keep the language EMCs, or electronic message centers, in their motion referencing the definition that's in the draft ordinance being worked on.
Yes.
I don't even know what that draft is. I mean, how would anyone know? Where's the notice? I mean, who are you going to, when you're passing something like this, you have to give notice to the public as to what it is. So I mean, the more complicated you make it, the more difficult it is to understand. I don't know what this EMC or EMS is, but whatever it is, the motion's got to plainly state it, so everybody understands what is being prohibited, if it's legal at all.
Commissioner Schneider?
Well, I was just going to offer wording on that, if it would be agreeable. Let's see if I can word this correctly, because something tells me this can be delicate. I would define, for the case of this moratorium, an electronic messaging center is anything that uses electricity beyond lighting of the sign, illumination of the sign. Basically, if it has a light that is lighting it so that people can see it, that's okay, but anything above and beyond that, not acceptable until said date.
Commissioner Stonehouse?
That would be acceptable to me. Thank you.
That would not be acceptable to me.
There's a, we're running into a problem here. It's one thing to put a moratorium on legislation, whether you can do it or not in this fashion. It's a second, it's a different problem if you start legislating without an ordinance, and that's what I'm hearing. You're starting to define things which go into ordinances. You're legislating now, and you can't do it in this fashion. That's clearly not proper. If you want to put a moratorium on something that's already the law, then I guess, you know, we'll see if it flies or not.
Commissioner Stonehouse?
I think it's a great motion, I go ahead with it. We have a situation, and the situation is very simply this, if we take no action, somebody will take action ahead of us, and we will be stuck trying to clean the mess up. We don't have 30 days to wait for something to come out of the Planning Commission that we can act on after due public hearing. We need to take action tonight to stop something that potentially will occur. If a motion to have a moratorium is inaccurate, then we need one, or is not the best we can do, then we need something that accomplishes the same thing in a legal sense.
Commissioner Coyne, you are first.
Well, Commissioner Ryan's sweeping motion of having all signs moratoriumedized for 30 days is making more sense. Can you do something like that, and then make it, have some exception or appeal to it? Because, I mean, what you're saying is, if you start legislating, it's not in the ordinance, then that's inappropriate. Is it appropriate, is his motion, is his idea inappropriate also?
Well, his motion may not be inappropriate in the legal sense, but I mean, I guess, as was pointed out, it may affect legitimate applicants, and that's the problem with that, I think.
I agree. Is there a way then to have an appeals process that would take that into account?
Unless it's written into the ordinance already, we couldn't establish an appeals process by doing this. I think the simplest thing is really, if you're going to do a moratorium, moratorium on electric signs, whatever those are, in the DDA district until you take other action. I don't know, but there's a motion already out there on the floor, and I think it reads someone like that, right, Commissioner Stonehouse?
I want to help you clean that up a little bit, though. There is no DDA district, it's Central Business District.
Okay. A DDA district.
Right. I'm just helping you clean it up.
Commissioner Coyne, you have the floor.
Whose idea was it to define that, then? Who said that?
It was Commissioner Stonehouse's motion was a DDA district.
Electric signs, and you're saying, don't do that, just say it. Whose idea was it to define it?
I was getting back to, you were referencing EMCs in the motion. There's no definition of EMCs, and that gets back to Ron's point, that becomes legislation. You're legislating through a motion.
What about electric signs? Is that acceptable?
That's what I'm hearing from the attorney. I really, I think Ron kind of alluded to this, and you heard it from the commission, is you're dealing with something that's existing. Something that's existing is place a moratorium on all signs in the DDA district to a certain point in time. And if somebody else who wants to get an application, and it's not an EMC, they're going to be set back, but that's probably your, I don't know, I think legally...
Commissioner Ryan?
Yeah, I just, you know, to me, and I can't make a motion, but if I could, I would make a motion that we direct the... Who issues the signs, Dennis? Who issues the permits?
Well, the city manager directs the employees.
But I'm, what department?
Community Development, Planning Division.
I would make a motion that we direct the Community Development Department not to issue any new sign permits during the next 30 days, pending the presentation of new ordinance material by the Planning Commission.
I understand, that's, there's a motion pending, but you're just saying you would if you could.
Commissioner Stonehouse?
Um, just a question to Mr. Stackwitz, did we accept section eighty-two, three definitions when we accepted the other ordinance?
You accepted a section, but not all of it. The, I think the EMC stuff was left out of that, I can't, I can't speak to that, I'm just, sorry, I wasn't prepared for this discussion.
Looking at the definitions amendments, which are quite compelling, I guess, and does indeed include electronic message center, all those animated signs and, and other, you know, plotting and commercial district, et cetera.
That would fly?
If not, I will certainly support your motion. Your motion, non-motion.
I wanna go home.
So, where are we?
Okay. We have a motion and a second at this time.
What did, what did Dennis just say, I mean, to Ron? Did what Fred said make sense, or no?
What Dennis said was, he can't, he's not prepared to speak to what's being proposed tonight, he hasn't had a chance to review this, he doesn't know if the definition that's been proposed by the commission is actually included, he doesn't know if you can have a moratorium, he doesn't know what the impact of the decision tonight will be on any kind of public hearing on Tuesday. You're gonna have to direct city manager to tell the staff what to do, but his trepidation is, if you're asking me to direct him to do something unlawful, and he's got any pushback from the members of his organization, how is he supposed to manage that when that question comes up? And so, I think what you're seeing in the smile on his face is the same kind of concerns that the city commission has in trying to find the right action and do the right thing is gonna create a lot of coffee challenges for him tomorrow morning as he tries to unravel it and provide guidance to the support staff.
Thank you. Commissioner Schneider?
Well, you know, there, there's a motion on the floor and a second. It will say that through all of the discussion, I think we've, we're discovering that it is an imperfect motion, but we are definitely more concerned as a commission with making sure that we don't have to clean up a mess later. And I think the intention is good, although I believe if we pass this, which I am in support of, it could cause considerable headaches for staff over the next few days, and it's probably a good thing that we approved and the budget for there to be some incentives distributed by the city manager. But, you know, I recognize the headache that that would, that this could cause to staff. I definitely want staff to understand that, that I get that, and I hope that staff understands that we're trying to find the best way, way forward, and I would encourage that we call the question, and if we vote no, then we'll find another way.
Commissioner Coyne?
I'd like to ask Mr. Stackwitz another question. Clarify for me, have we passed, have we passed the ordinance for everything except the DDA? No.
No.
Okay.
No, there was a section that was broken out that was dealing specifically with electronic message centers, standards for them, where they could be located at. That was not adopted with the last amendments to the sign ordinance, it was sent back to the planning commission.
Thank you.
Okay, with that, I'll ask the question. There's a motion by Commissioner Stonehouse, second by Commissioner Schneider. All in favor, say yes.
Yes.
Opposed?
No. Five people not voting, four people not voting.
I'm waiting for...
I'll vote yes.
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 Okay.
I think it passed five to two, or something.
No, I got four yeses so far, and three nos, showing Commissioner Ryan, Commissioner Coyne, and Commissioner DePietro voting no, and the motion passes four to three.
Cool.
Got that, city clerk? Thank you. End of that discussion. With that, we'll move to public comment. Comments should, should be limited to three minutes per person, please state your name, physical address when making public comment. Is there anyone wishing to address the commission at this time?
Good evening, you're in Malaki Nate Marquette Drive, I'll keep it really short. We had visitors from Finland and sister cities here a week ago, and they said, "This is a fabulously incredible place to live," and I concur. And they don't even know that the commissioners' minds can be changed, which they were changed this evening, thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else wishing to address the commission at this time?
Lisa Coombs, thirteen thirty, Woodbridge Marquette, and I just want to thank you for supporting the YMCA. Seven oh vote was very much appreciated. The other quick note that I would make is the next week, or two weeks from now, the DBA Marquette Royals group that you're going to decide on, they've actually met with us at the Y and talked about using our services for nutrition services for their players and being members of the Y for physical fitness, so we're supportive of that group coming in, and I've known Mike Stanaway since he was a kid and played here, and has coached and won championships the last few years, so I'm excited about them having that group here. Thanks, and good night.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to address the commission at this time?
James Gallant, Scandia.
Physical address, Scandia.
Uh, five thirty-eight Yalma Road, Scandia, Michigan. And it's, actually, I would ask you to please revisit a couple of issues, and that's one of them, is requiring a public's physical address, as you know, is completely irrelevant. I just say, please just consider city, township, or village, because you just tonight placed several young women and vulnerable adults at risk of things like stalking and exploitation by giving their personal information out like that on the internet. And you do it to children so too. I would ask you to please request a written report from the city attorney and Mike Angel, Chief of Police, concerning a still pending investigation by Child Protective Services, State of Michigan. I received a letter, they said it was referred to law enforcement for an investigation. I haven't got a report yet back on that. And would you get a personally, get a personal written report on that subject to say what the status of that complaint is, that children are being neglected by placing that risk and putting their address on the TV? And also, see what happens when you step online? I mean, come on. I mean, this is expectations, they're supposed, and then that's why they say that these expectations can sometimes turn into tyranny. Because the guy said he couldn't make a motion, he said, "Well, if I could make a motion," they call that motion to amend. Now, if you had a point of order concerning motion to amend, you'd know that. You'd say, "He made a motion, you motioned to amend, you take care of it, good to go." I don't know. It's kinda like Commissioner Ryan said, said, "Well, you know, we don't want to do that." The thing with the, with the streets, I guess, with the, 'cause we don't, we'd be, you know, maybe harming some relationships with our neighbors and our associates and our, you know, most valuable supporters and our electorate. You know, so he's saying, you know, "This is why you want to make decisions," so you, you know, there's a process, and, and you're just not doing it. And, you know, as you said, it's pulled off the table, the thing was pulled off the table. So, I'm saying, you motioned to approve as presented, you motioned to amend it according to the, along the line, and there you go. And then you can see what happened instead of, like the guy said, and then he keeps going back to it, too, and he's over here snickering, and he's going, "Uh, what were you talking about there?" Yeah, that's how it works in America. You motioned to approve as presented first, motioned to amend it along the line, you end up with a decision at the end. And you know it's gonna be yes or no vote, it's motioned to approve, yes or no, that's always gonna happen. Except for what you get St. Anne saying, "We're gonna motion to deny the application," which was called out of order. And because Commissioner Coyne makes a motion, it doesn't mean you have to accept it and entertain it, Your Honor. I mean, you just say, "That's out of order to make a motion." What was his motion? That's right. The motion with saying that, um, "We're gonna make this motion and then take stuff out of it, what was presented," you know? And he said, actually, the parliamentarian said, "Was there a motion to strike out?" And he said, "Yes," except motion to strike out's a secondary motion, has to be attached to a main motion to approve. Motion to approve, motion to strike out these parts, it's all in pieces, then you can, where are you to save a whole lot of time, a whole lot of money?
Thirty seconds, sir.
How much, how much does it cost per minute to be here? And you just burn it all up, like, you know? But you are trying, and I appreciate that.
Thank you, sir. With that, we'll close this portion of the public comment, turn it over to my fellow commissioners, Commissioner Stonehouse.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Late night, just a couple of quick things. I would like to suggest that Mr. Kulasek's recommendation concerning McClellan and US-41 be followed up. I think that, that is a significant problem, and it's one of those that I think we see every day, and we don't always realize it, it is a problem. I would also request that the traffic committee take another look, or take a look, at Genesee and South Marquette, or South Front Street. That light switches over, I think, to a blink light at ten o'clock at night from a normal traffic signal, and I, I think that's just not a safe thing to have happen. We have a lot of traffic out there, then, we've got people flying up and down Front Street, and the people coming out of either Genesee or out of Lake Shore are not anticipating that. So, I would, would request them to take a good look at that. Other than that, thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Commissioner Stonehouse. Commissioner Ryan?
Yeah, it's been a long night, you know, we get paid by the meeting, not by the hour, so, uh, slim pickings tonight. I disagreed sometimes tonight with some of my fellow commissioners, but, you know, I think, and especially if you look at the last item, no one can accuse us of meeting behind the scenes or planning things ahead of time. It's pretty obvious, this is like sausage making, you know, but, but that's, that's great, this is a democracy, and we get things done, and, and sometimes it takes us some time, but, you know, we get the issues on the table, everybody gets to say what they think, and I think that's, I think that's a good thing. I guess the one issue I hope that doesn't fall between the track, between the cracks is the lady who was concerned about smoking, and I'm assuming she's not talking about city-operated housing, but federally subsidized housing, and we probably don't have much to say about that, I'm guessing, but, uh, maybe the manager can comment on that when he has his shot at the end of all this, but I, I do think if there is something we can do, you know, it obviously is a legitimate concern. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Coyne?
Well, thank you. I wanted to just alert Mr. Stackwitz that tomorrow I'm going to come in and make an application for an electronic messaging sign with my name here, just as a test case, okay? Okay. And I, I also wanted to just give credence and support to the McClellan Street thing and the smoking thing, and, um, one thing about the parking lot at Lakeview, I was there yesterday, and, I mean, there are some big time potholes in, in that parking lot, and they could be fixed, I mean, we don't have to repave the whole thing, a couple of them fell in, so they could be fixed. I wanted to just comment, and I'm sure Mayor DePietro will comment on this, about the Great Lakes Mayor's Initiative meeting on Wednesday and Thursday and Friday. It was a spectacular meeting. I generally don't get much out of meetings like that, but it was very educational, very informative. A whole bunch of mayors from the St. Lawrence River to Thunder Bay to Chicago. And the thing that most impressed me was, I originally thought, "Well, this is gonna be worthless, because it'll be dominated by Chicago, Milwaukee, Montreal, and Quebec," and, uh, boy, it wasn't. Most of the leadership there are people in towns of, you know, five hundred people or fifteen hundred people. And it was just a great meeting, and it took Mayor DePietro and I, we were down at the Cinder Pond visiting a mayor that sailed here from Nipigon, Ontario. It took us an hour and a half to walk from the Cinder Pond to Latitudes, and we were both sober, so it wasn't the problem of not being able to walk, but we kept running into mayors walking along the abutments there, and then wanting, and they'd see our name tags with Marquette, and they'd wanted to talk. And interestingly, of the whole group there, two of, two of the mayors are actually gonna move here, they were looking at houses. I mean, this, this was not an impulsive decision, they'd been studying this town, and every mayor we talked to, they just couldn't say enough good things about this community. And interestingly, I mean, it was just a fantastic meeting, and the mayor did a great job, and he, I think his ability, he stuck it to Mayor Daley, and you might relay that, which was wonderful, in a, in a justing fun way, and he was very gracious, so thank you for your great performance there and hospitality, and it was, thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Coyne. Commissioner Companzey?
I think a lot of it's been said, but the one thing I do want to mention is, I just want to thank the outgoing members of the Senior Service Task Force. They are kind of the start of this all, and I guess we'll see where it goes, but I do want to just pass on my personal appreciation for their, their effort to serve and, I guess, guide us on the right path.
Thank you. Commissioner Schneider?
I agree, most of it's been said, but I will say that I certainly did miss all of you two weeks ago. This has given me a reminder of how much I did miss, so I appreciate you loading it all up on me this week to catch up on, on the last meeting. And other than that, I do want to actually extend an apology to staff in the commission trying to do the best thing that we feel is right. I know that we've, we've caused a headache, and I appreciate you working with us, and I appreciate everything you do.
Thank you, Commissioner Schneider. Commissioner Naimi?
Thank you, Your Honor. I'll echo the McClellan and the smoking issues, and I think the managers probably got the message. But I, I also want to echo Commissioner Coyne's comments about the, the Great Lakes Conference. It was a very good conference, the sessions were very helpful, very informative, as opposed to many conferences we attend, and, and I constantly would, would talk to people from other areas, and they'd tell us what a great city we have, and I, my stock reply was that it's nice to see it through someone else's eyes, because we take it all for granted, the beauty and the, and the benefit we have living here. And lastly, I'd like to thank the Superior Watershed Partnership, they did a very nice job, and, and it's, it's great to have the conference here through their auspices and their, their support. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Naimi. And also, I'll touch up a little bit on the Great Lakes and St. Lawrence City's initiative. This was a tenth annual meeting and conference held in Marquette this past week, with Marquette being one of the first original and founding members of the Great Lakes Initiative, so that was pretty awesome for all the communities that now are with the Great Lakes Initiative. Marquette was one of the founding members, and I believe the seventh city to join. And I gotta thank my fellow commissioners for being at this event, this was awesome. We met some very great people, and you didn't really know what we were going, how we were going to be treated, but the chemistry was just awesome at this event. And I thank city manager Bill Vida, the community and businesses in the city of Marquette, and, and it, people in the community of Marquette had a chance to meet and greet the mayors of the Great Lakes, and, uh, former mayor of Chicago, Richard Daley, he was awesome, very good speaker, and executive director Dave Ulrich, including mayors from Canada. They were all very great, and I'm glad that, uh, everybody in the city or around the city area had a chance to see a lot of these people, because they commented how friendly the people were in the city of Marquette, and, and from Canada, the mayors were also from Canada, so... And I'd like to thank Carl Lindquist, executive director of Superior Watershed Partnership, Tina Harris, Director of Arts and Culture, DDA Director, Mona Lang, Northern Michigan University, President, President David Haynes, all the staff from these departments, the sponsors and volunteers who helped to make this such a great community event. And this didn't go unnoticed, because that's all we heard from the visiting mayors and their families, and from Canada, home press, they were going up and down the street seeing the Canadian flags being displayed with the US flag, and the nameplates from all, uh, region, the cities that were in attendance, got to see all their nameplates and that on the streetlights, or the street posts, so also, that was very awesome to hear all the good comments. And thank you to Commissioner Stonehouse for giving our visitors a tour of the Maritime Museum, and city manager Bill Vida with his walk and tour of our waterfront DDA Business District, the historic neighborhood in, in our community, those... District, the historic neighborhood in, in our community. The people were just impressed with how we preserved a lot of the historic buildings, and yet they get to see 21st century buildings being erected, but very compatible with the historic area. So that was nice to hear. The conference for this year to address the Great Watershed was to address the Great Watershed, superior experiences, economic opportunities presented by Great Lakes tourism, water quality, environmental protection, and other issues directly related to the pier Michigan. So these communities were very, very committed to what this program is all about. And also, I'd like to announce Captain Paul Inaretti will retire on June 30th from the Fire Department. Paul began his career at the city of Marquette in August 1987 in assessing department as a assistant zoning administrator and housing inspector. In July 91, Paul became a state-certified fire inspector, transferred to the Fire Department, and has been the city's lead fire inspector since July 2001. He reviews all construction plans and renovations, inspects homes, hotels, motels, theaters, and investigates fires. So again, we congratulate Paul Inaretti on a super career with the city Marquette and Market Fire Department. And I'd also like to thank all the folks who helped make the Michigan Lieutenant Governor visit a great success, and in particular, the team at the Market Maritime Museum, Lake Shore Bicycles, and Nico and the crew of the Marquette flagship, the Coaster Two. It was a good opportunity to show Lieutenant Governor Brian Colley and his son some of the best of Marquette, and we're glad he and his family had a great time. Also, my fellow commissioners and I wish everyone a safe 4th of July holidays. Enjoy our community parade cookouts, family cookouts, the fireworks, and if visiting Marquette for the 4th of July holidays, have a safe trip back home. And with that, I'm going to turn this over to city manager Bill Vida.
Thank you, Your Honor. I'll keep this brief. Just wanted to thank the commission for all the hard work tonight. We know that you don't get paid by the hour, and we appreciate all the homework we give you and the deliberations and opportunity to find the best solutions for Marquette. Would also like to thank all the people who step up and advocate for themselves. We saw tonight a lot of different groups and a lot of different interests speak up and present their views directly to the city commission. That doesn't happen as often as I know staff would like, and we appreciate the courage it took, as well as the interest in presenting their views. We also noted to Commissioner Ryan's point, we'll follow up, as other commissioners have echoed, with Ms. Waters on the issues that she raised regarding federal housing. I think you might recall from the last Housing Commission presentation, there are a lot of different permutations to how people receive federal money and what their eventual living situation ends up being, and so we'll try to get in contact with her through the, through the seniors' center advocacy, as well as through the Marquette Housing Authority, to see what the root cause is and if we can't help her out. And with that, I have nothing further, Your Honor.
Thank you, and with that, we're adjourned.